All right, time being six oh four, I will call the meeting to order, please rise to the pledgeable agents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Places were discovered in Floyd County. Eight hundred of those ballots were for President Trump, eight hundred and sixty-five for Biden, charges Secretary of State Brad Rat.
You have that number for?
He was able to.
Okay, all right, let's proceed with roll call, please. Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary?
I hear. Here.
Here.
Today.
Here. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not, no.
Uh, no.
And I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda, there is one note on item eleven, instead of lot eight, it should be lot nine, so that item should read Bay Properties Lot Nine and Eighteen Flat. Are there any other additions to the agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Move.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay, motion carries.
None of both cases have yet to be.
I am. I think we're missing public comment on here. Oh, no, there it is, it's the big paragraph, right in front of my face, so at this time, does anyone have a public comment they would like to make? There being no public comment, public comment is closed. Item number five, approval of minutes from November fifth, twenty twenty.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Don, second by Dan, to approve the minutes from November fifth, twenty twenty, for the discussion.
Just Deb, just to let you know, I think this is correct.
Yeah, and share it to yourself. Thank you.
There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay, motion carries, minutes are approved. Moving on to item number six, we have approval for a new malt beverage license.
It's the old one.
Now, we have authority in our usability, you know, the city.
It's out in the, it's out in the city.
Oh, it's not.
It's in section.
Yeah, I know.
Ninety-three fifty-four.
Move approval.
Very good.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Don, to approve the malt beverage license. On this board, Bradley Hofer. Further discussion?
I would switch up. Pioneer Spirit.
Pioneer Spirit.
Okay.
Business name Pioneer Spirit LLC, owner Bradley Hofer. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay? Motion carries. License is approved. The next up is for approved liquor license renewal, so there are several of them in your packet. We have Captain Norm's Riverside Roadhouse, Marina Grill, Cottonwood, Glen Ridge Gold Course, Mayfield Bar and Grill, TJ's Mini Mart, Have The Family Produce, Tiger Tooth Fireworks, and that is it.
Then I have a point, those go by population, correct? So, at what point?
We can't get any more liquor, low beverage, you know, we can, that's up to you guys as a board, but no, there's no more.
Yes, that's all we.
That's all we can have.
If it grows by a certain amount, then I'll be allowed another one of those.
Yeah, it depends, and that's, you know, I don't think, you know, that's really likely to go soon.
So, thinking back when the pandemic first started, we closed down all businesses that went down, and I believe one of the businesses on this list, they'll do that. I guess my question is, did that, all that re-licenses or?
You know, these are liquor.
No, if I remember correctly, there were, we never closed businesses down, we did limit the capacity of the business and asked them to adhere to social distancing, and there were complaints on that business, and the sheriff did go out to that business.
The dilemma is how many people could be in there, like, frequently, they weren't following. I know before we took any, if anything, had the county health board, they were very packed after, after we took action, as the county health board did. If you remember, complaints, I don't know, if you were going to continue, sure, I remember the sheriff did stop out there, but I think.
From what I recall, as there was, there were multiple rooms, and I think, you know, there was a learning curve, and I think they thought that these people in this room and these people in this room were different, and I know what they feel like.
Well, anyone out there, they were overgrown, there were plenty of people, one room, the bar. So, I guess my question would be on that application, can we put the vol liar that if they have anything happened, this would be taken?
I don't know.
I think there's, I mean, there are regulations regarding when you need to get a license and keep it, but.
I know, but that's one of them.
I don't think that that's one of them, of course, it's COVID, so there's lots of things that, you know, haven't happened in the past, but I don't think there's anything that allows you to put a condition on a license. Jack, but.
What's that better than not approving? They got my word if I ask. I think you're basing on the issue.
What would you like to do?
Well, I'd like to put a vol liar on there that if they leave one more simple valley, there's another license, so their licenses will be tested. There, they just have to get out of here.
I guess I'm.
I hate to have it, you know, we won't wait again until December first.
Karen said the end of the year, Patty.
And do you see?
Well, we could certainly turn on the next agenda to take action, the first meeting in December.
Let's prove everybody that's there today.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for that.
I recommend a motion that we approve all other licenses, the vendors for renewal, except cottonwood crown, which can be reviewed and looked at at the next meeting.
Thanks.
I have a motion by Don, a second by Joe, to approve all of the liquor licenses except for the cottonwood. We'll review that at the next meeting. Further discussion?
You know, if they don't have to be approved till the end of the year, maybe we would be better off just doing them all at once and treating everybody the same. I'm not aware of the authority that we do have, you know, to not grant one of these licenses and how have the energy potential to be to this business if we go for a license.
Their business goes out as normal, but we're sending them a message that we're not, we're not going to deal with that compliance. And I think something needs to be done, that, that issue. Everybody else closed down, everybody else did it.
Further discussion?
I don't see an issue with both pulling that one, or that, you know, without deciding to know. Our options, I guess.
So the motion on the table is to approve all except for the cottonwood, which we will reevaluate at our next meeting. Roll call vote. Don?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary? Gary?
No. No.
Yes. Motion passes four to one. So we will make a note to get that on the next agenda.
Are we going to have Mr. Bond come to me, or are we going to let him know about this? This looks, most likely.
So Deb, if you would look into if we can actually make a motion with an adder, essentially, clause on there, that would be helpful, and would someone want to call him? I will do that.
I know him.
So Dan, you're going to call him?
Yes.
Can I republish the notice like you did for this one?
Okay. Republish, here you're not, yeah. I was going to say, I noticed that it has to be within seven days of this.
All right, next on our agenda, our claims.
Question on the Tyler Technologies.
Yeah, Patty said that's our county software, and what all does that cover, Patty?
The, that, um, new programs, and then if we have problems, we call down and, you know, if we have a, with an item, we call in their support also.
Is that each year or for each?
Each year.
Any other questions?
Well, I want to note again, I'm not sure what page it is on, but the juvenile bill was fourteen thousand or around that amount, and is that for one person?
It's about, we talked about this before, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars a day. There is a meeting scheduled on December to work on possible options for it.
I think the issue is though, isn't this one person that's been on it for a very, very long time, and we keep paying twenty thousand bucks a month for something that he been paying?
Um, I think, probably, I think, I believe that's more than one, I think at one point it was up to, I believe in Boston.
There's, I'm obligated for anything. Do whatever else. That's all.
So our, our community, if there's more, if there are no further questions on the claims, I would entertain a motion to approve.
We'll move.
Yeah, Sherry?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Gary.
He muted himself. I can't unmute.
I have a motion on the table to approve claims, do I have a second?
Yes.
So motion by Joe, second by Don, to approve the claims as presented, further discussion. Go ahead, Gary.
I had a question on, on page four, I, we've been having some technical difficulties here, page four of the claims, there's fifteen thousand dollars there to Fox and Youngberg Lawyers, is that, is that somebody that can't pay their attorney fee again?
That's suddenly what we pay every month.
That's a what, every month?
It's the, it's the county's, according attorneys, Fox, Youngberg.
Oh, you mean we, we pay them fifteen thousand dollars a month just for, have them on retainer? Is that right?
They're public defenders.
No, that, that, they don't, they submit bills in, in more than once.
No, we pay them every month.
Gary, they're court-appointed attorneys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's just what I wanted to know, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, so motion on the table to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay?
Uh, nay.
Motion carries four to one.
Deb, is that usually how that is for?
Yeah.
Next is the auditor treasury report and pooled cash report, we will take them together.
Move approval. Very good.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Don, to approve the auditor treasury report, pooled cash report, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero. And that concludes item six. Item seven, introduce new director of contact center and update.
How's my name is Brad, I'm on the.
Come on up here, you're not going to get out of the spotlight on this one, so please turn the microphone on when you get there, there should be a little button.
It's the basis of the.
You're on, you're going to go.
My name is Brad, I'm here, I'm a member of the contact center board, Jennifer couldn't be here tonight because of a health reason, so I've come on board to step in. As you probably know, Jennifer is retiring from the contact center, in fact, she wanted to retire in March, but got us through the COVID crisis at the moment. Since then, we've been interviewing, and we have hired Troy Furman as the new director of the contact center. We're here, I just wanted Troy to tell you a little bit about himself, and tell you what we've been doing in the three weeks that he's been on board.
Senator Troy Furman, I'm from Newton Division, I've worked in mostly mal health, HSE, Rose Park, and I was police officer for a while when I was up, and I'm glad to be part of this program, and I'm looking forward to working with people. Some of the things that we've done so far in my short tenure, it's been a couple weeks ago, we've met with Jesse Bailey halfway, and we discussed ways that we can work together, and create some programs to us, ways that we can, you know, prevent duplication services and stuff like that, and that was really important. We also met with Laura Anderson, who she did the same thing, explained the programs and ways that we can work together, and we have a lot of some future issues scheduled to move on that. I'm looking with a few nights out Dakota, they've just contacted the HSE, really, I have a constant setup with them, to discuss some programs that we could work together. That's about all I have right now.
Sounds like you're running already.
Yeah, hopefully we'll be back in January, even updated here and updated with more people that we see happening at the contact center.
Great.
I couldn't identify you with your passport.
All right, thanks for stopping by.
Thank you.
Right, item eight, Mr. Solatchek, can you give us a list of items for us?
First is right away, that is in continent communications, this would be for the cell tower on three ten, forty-eight pound fiber, boring and blowing.
And Mike, you, for the public, obviously, that would change the proceeds for.
Yeah, we'll be submitting a bill if we can.
So, what are we seeing long-term for three ten? I guess, is that, is this going to be one time you go, or is it deteriorating, so we're going to create?
Well, minimum maintenance, we will grade it, I'm going to approve it, that is, I don't feel that is up to myself, that is up to the commission, I don't think we would approve a road like that, as we know the condition of existing roads.
Move approval of the right of way application.
Very good.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Don, to approve the right of way application for the work on three ten. Further discussion?
I didn't follow this route, but I guess there are obviously concerns on three ten, looks like they're going to come in on the north side and then cross underneath, and are you okay with that, what this plan is?
Well, I would honestly, that would work out better for us if that road would ever be improved, right?
I guess during the holes, they're on that north side too, it's like, and on the south side, there would be a lot of dirtwork to be done, so they have to, you know, there's no ditches out there, driving a lot of dirt.
Right, a motion to approve on the table, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay, motion carries five zero. Moving on to Johnson Bridge.
Second here, I got Johnson Bridge back in August was our yearly bridge inspections on the Emerald Bridge as well, they inspected all of our bridges this year. Johnson Bridge does have a, well, it's spliced joint that is cracked, remember last year we had one not complete, we were able to drill it and stop it, that one did not move, this one is larger than the one that was on two, so this one here is going to require bolted plates on the splice, we'll have to, we'll kind of create out the deck, we'll cut a hole in the deck. Either drilling and prep work.
You know, I'm going to butt in here for a second, I know last year we, we did have a controversial vote of three to two on yearly bridge inspections, and this is exactly why we need to have and continue to have annual inspections of these Jamesville Bridges, this is an example of catching something early, and we don't want any cracks in it, but we found this one in time before it got closed down, before it was, became a danger, and if we look, this is the second problem in two years, right around, maybe a little longer than two years, with this bridge, we had problems with weeks, bridge, like Mike just said, that we able to stop, Jamesville Bridge was damaged in the flood, and so I hope we continue with these annual inspections, because this is why we do it right here, to stop it, and to keep those bridges for as long as.
So you had two bids, and we need to approve one of them.
Yep, Journey Group come with a bid of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, and then there was VX Civil, seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twelve. I guess Journey, Journey Group, their price is definitely a lot lower, and they have done workforce, they're the ones that did the repair on the Johnson Bridge back in twenty eighteen, they're the ones that repaired Jamesville, I guess they're a good company to work with, that we have a proud of their work.
Mobilization.
Hey, Mike, Mike, this is Gary.
Yeah.
Does state law require us to take the cheapest bid?
No, they do not.
Oh, good.
Well, the cheapest bid is also a company that we've worked with, and they can do work and have experience with this bridge, which doesn't always happen, so, you know, thirty thousand dollar savings. So I would be ready for a motion, yes, as I move approval of the bid from June for not exceed forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Second.
And do you want a, a time, there's no timeline on this.
Yeah, there is a timeline.
In the packet.
January twenty-nine.
Do we want to assess some sort of revision if it's not done by?
That's all. There's penalties and stuff available.
So I have a motion on the table to approve the journey bid for forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Very good.
Oh, I got a second too, sorry, Don, I should have finished that, that was my fault. So further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero. And?
Going on to this, I call it Stip Bridge, there's a bridge of my son's church to the east there, about five and a quarter, I had it on fire, you're playing for last year, it replaced, I just received paperwork this year to get the easements done, so we have to get through all this, the easements and certificates here, in order for us to let the project, put it out for bid for, for next year. Met with the three landowners there for voluntary right of way donation. The temporary easement would be, you guys want me to go through all that? There'll be a temporary easement and permanent easement on all of these. Any questions on the easements? Like, I assume all need a motion for each, or how is that worth adding?
Is it just for?
There's like three.
There's three easements. Yeah, aren't they for the same?
Three different people.
Yeah, well, we should do both, all three. So separate.
Move approval of that, what, what do you want to call the D, please, man? How you want to do it, Mike, by name, what would you say, by, by name? How you wanna do it, Mike, by name, what would you say by name for the easement?
How do you have it? Application.
There's no really description, I mean, not a section, do they have what?
There's a parcel or, or name.
I would, I think name, so you think they'll?
Well, you could do the name.
And then section one?
Yeah.
What?
Or project number.
Or, how do you say the project?
The project number is, that's, that's.
The same for all of them.
It's the state number.
Yeah, yeah, so that would, I think you gotta do the landlord name.
The parcel number.
Excuse me, I use a parcel number.
Move approval of the Dean Base. Easement parcel number one six. One zero one one point three five zero point two zero zero.
Okay.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Joel, to approve the base. Right of way. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Move approval of the Fireborough owner and Curtis Olmer. Easement parcel number one six point zero one one point three zero zero point one zero zero.
Okay.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Don, to approve the Olmer. Right of way application. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Move approval of the Levi Jill Cloud. Easement parcel number one six point zero one one. Three five zero point three zero zero.
Okay.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Joel, to approve the Cloud.
Clute.
Cloud, sorry, Clute. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero. Is that all you needed on ours?
Yep, and then. I have the three other certificates. Which one do you guys?
Are those the right of way certificates?
Yeah, there's a right of way certificate, a letting. Letting authorization.
And you want these by the?
Yeah.
Yeah, would you want, is the B R O number different or which one?
No, these, it's all the same. That is the project number for this bridge.
So, of the motions that were just made for, what, what were these? For the actual right of way agreement?
Those were for the easement agreements.
So we have a letting authorization, a right of way certificate. And a utility certificate.
Utilities, that's just, I'm trying to contact the utilities that are in the existing right of ways. And let them know. B Y Water. They claim their, their water line is out in the field there, so it's actually not in the right of way right now. And it should be fine, Golden West, they do have a full line in the ditch. They will move it at their expense. If it is in the way.
So let's start with a motion on the first one pertaining to the letting authorization. Now, couldn't they put in a motion to approve the letting utilities? And certificate for each one, so we don't have to do a motion for letting and for the utilities?
I think it'd be, it would, it'd probably be more clear to just do a motion for the letting of. Right of way certificate and the utility certificate.
Move approval of the letting authorization for project B R O eight zero six eight.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Joe, second by Dan, to approve the letting authorization for the project, for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Move approval of the utility certificate for project number B R O eight zero six eight. Nine six thirteen. Okay.
So I have a motion by Joe, second by Don. To approve the utilities. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero, and then? Yeah, the right of way, go ahead.
Move approval of the right of way certificate for project number B R O eight zero six eight.
I have a motion by Joe, second by Dan, to approve the right of way certificate for the project, for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Danny, that way you don't, because Sherry's been signing.
You're making me do a lot of work tonight with my pen. Is that all you got?
Yep.
Okay.
You have all three.
Well, I just have this one.
Yep.
Is there something in here too, or? Alright.
Alright, guys, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, thank you. Item number nine, develop mine for Article Five amendments via Section seventeen nineteen, including timeline and expectations. Do you want to take this one?
I can, I can talk about that. So at the last meeting, we. We discussed Section seventeen nineteen. I'll read it quick. County Commission Amendment and Resiling Juries, the County Commission may amend, supplements, change, modify, or appeal any regulation, restriction, boundary, or enforcement provisions established. In the zoning ordinance resulting in that. The County Commission shall forward a copy of the proposed changes to the Planning Commission's Public Review and Comment pursuant to Section eight oh nine. Upon receipt of the comments from the Planning Commission, the County Commission shall provide a notice of public hearing pursuant to. Section two zero zero three, the County Commission shall thereafter either adopt or reject such amendments, supplements, changes, modification, or repeal. If adopted, the County Commission shall publish a notice of fact of adoption once. In a legal newspaper. Of the county and take back on the twentieth day after publication. For South Dakota, codified lot eleven dash two dash thirty. Just to recap of kind of what we brought up last meeting. You know, this changes to Article Five, there's been a lot of suggestions, a lot of attempts. I feel it does need to be done sooner than later. I guess what we can talk about is, as elected officials. We need to own what these changes say. We're ultimately putting our stand in approval on that. As opposed to. You know. Let's say Planning Commission noticing errors in the ordinance or something that's reoccurring, that they. Want to send changes up to the commission, I more than welcome that still. Something of this magnitude, and given the history of it, I think it's time for us to take some action.
So, it is probably not prudent that we do these at regular meetings, because our regular meetings tend to run rather long. With the other county business that we do, so we are looking at special meetings. Needing to start going through Article Five. And what was originally proposed, what has been proposed since then, feedback that has been given in that whole timeframe. So tonight, we would like to set some dates for special meetings, and I do believe we need a combination of day meetings and evening meetings. Because every people have different schedules, and we certainly need to encourage public comment at these special meetings and input. And I know time is, is getting away from us, as it always does, especially as we get older. And these are the holidays as well, so we do need to keep that in mind. We have a meeting December first and fifteenth, those would be our regular commission meeting days. I am personally, that usually has a pretty open schedule. But I know others do not. So are there days that do not work? At all? For any of us? And evenings that do not work?
Sherry, I would suggest we wait till after the first year, and the reason being is, you know, we did have a new. Elected member to this board, one of the box, and I, I think it might be. A good idea to have her involved in the decision-making process of this, because she's gonna be coming on board in January. And she might have some pretty good ideas, then the voters voted her in to represent them, so. I would be an advocate of waiting till after she's seated before we have these conversations, because. Ultimately, you know, she's been the on-boarder, he voted. And I think we should have her.
Other discussion?
I can support Dan's view.
Now that in the holiday season.
What days in January are we going to schedule tonight?
I can reopen January, all of a sudden.
Any. Anytime, are there days that will not work, so that I can get these on the calendar? We're looking at least two meetings in January dedicated to this topic. Wednesdays are usually church evenings, Tuesdays and Thursdays are usually. School activities, but it doesn't mean we can't have meetings those nights. Mondays are usually?
I have the twentieth of January open.
You have one, one day open?
Well, I have also, you know, on the first County Commission, we have planning commissions on the library board, on the historical society board. The technical board. Personally, that I have planned. I have the twentieth. That's a great. Morning, morning.
What days are?
Wednesday?
So January and twentieth, and then I will pick another day before that timeframe, so there are a couple weeks apart. Usually on a task force type scenario, we meet twice a month, we always pick Monday evening. Because it tended to be open for most folks, so I will pick two days, one day meeting, morning probably, and one evening meeting, and we will start with that. So the goal is to formulate the changes that we want to send to the Planning Commission, so between now.
As a board decided that, I mean, it sounds like that's what it's gonna be, but I think we should vote. And decide if we're gonna, you know. Go down the order seventeen nineteen, seventeen nineteen was discussed, but. I think if that's the way we're gonna go, we should be in motion. We should vote on that. I'm still a proponent of having the Planning Commission. Evolved in this. Getting their.
Yes, I don't see it necessarily as a pro, and I think the vote comes when. The commission. People who do not participate, they don't have to, but the commission will sit and discuss this, they're often in public meetings. And when we feel we have something that we would then vote to.
I would agree with that. Don's good with that, so we will move forward with planning for two official meetings in January to get the ball rolling. And we've certainly had plenty of time to get feedback on this, so we should be more than ready to discuss it. And that, that was essentially the reason that was on the agenda. So item number ten is not scheduled officially until seven P M, so we cannot start item number ten. We can go ahead and do the plaques, though, is that correct, Gary?
Yes.
Okay, let's move to item number eleven and do the base property plaque for lot nine and eighteen, so I will let you. Do the official version of that.
We have a plot of lots nine and eighteen in Bay Cliff, Bay Cliff Estates located in the west half of the south half of. Twelve point nine one acres of the south half, in the southwest corner of Section seven, and the west half. Of the west half of Section eighteen, lying north of Highway fifty-two, except platting areas known as. Trance Seventh Edition, and except lots one and two of parcel A, and further accepting parcel B and C McDay Edition. All being in Dodge and ninety-three North Range fifty-six West of Fifth Prince Boulevard in the eighteen town.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Joel, to approve the plaque for lot nine and eighteen. Further discussion?
Well, on our approval checklist, the all required signatures, not checked, but it appears at all.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Second plaques in same area, lots four, five, and eight in Bay Cliff Estates located in the west half of the south, twelve point nine one acres. Of the south half of the southwest corner of Section seven, and in the west half of the west half of Section eighteen, lying north of Highway fifty-two. Except platting areas known as Trance Seventh Edition, and except lots one and two of parcel A, and further accepting parcels B and C McDay Edition. All being in Dodge and ninety-three North Range fifty-six West of Fifth Prince Boulevard in the eighteen town.
And a motion by Joe, second by Dan, to approve the base property slot four, five, and eight. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero. Dan, you think we have time to squeeze thirteen in before seven o'clock?
You go.
We might as well proceed with that one. Oh, yeah, we can, so Dan and I met with the Conservation Board last Thursday. To discuss the open position that they have out there. They are. They are certainly in favor of keeping a full-time person. They do feel it's hard to hire a part-time person for that type of position, especially when you start going through the responsibilities the person has to the NRCS office itself. All of the work, especially during the summer. I did talk to another county employee who was kind of interested in maybe taking on those roles as a part-time person. And this person felt that maybe they could do two days at that office and three days at their other, but there would be times when that would conflict. So during the course of that conversation, we did talk about the opportunity to share this position with Bonhom County. I had called the Bonhom County Commissioner and asked him to talk to his fellow commissioners. I called him back and I could not get a hold of him. So I don't have any feedback from that scenario yet. They did have, I think, one application for the open position. They're going to proceed to interview this person and see what qualifications are there, et cetera. So certainly, and Dan, you can jump in anytime from the conversation then, because you were there for the whole thing. Certainly did not decide at that meeting what we were planning to do. But they were very in support of keeping the current position. Dan, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, when we spoke with the Conservation Staff and Dan Melhoff, the rest of the NRCS members, what was really eye-opening to me is the amount of conservation acres that we have in Yankton County compared to other places. Now, Mr. Melhoff is coming from Monmouth County. He said we have double, maybe even more, the amount of interest in these programs as the other counties do. And I think a lot of that is due to having a county NRCS relationship and having that extra person in there. In addition, we're having this, you know, federal program such as Cedar Tree Sharing, water lines for tanks, equip dollars. Those all go to help the producers in Yankton County. And it made me realize how important this position is. If we get through our due diligence, when this position is open, to see if it's still warranted. And I believe it absolutely is. You know, to help our producers and our farmers and our conservationists in the county. I'm in full support of maintaining this position as it is now. The things that we do in Yankton County that are different than in Bonhom County, et cetera, is we do a lot of tree planting, a lot of tree planting additionally. Cassie in this position did plant well over $15,000 worth of trees each year. And that's in Bonhom and Monmouth County, they don't do that. And so this is really an important position and I'm in full support of maintaining it.
Are there any questions?
I spoke with several people in our CS office just to get their opinion too. And they expressed things that I haven't been able to talk to. You know, I know we talked about possibly sharing that position somewhere, but their number one, probably takeaway is that that position needs to be in that office. Two, you know, that person needs to be, it's a needed position and it's a needed position by somebody that was motivated to kind of sell that. You know, they need to write grants and need to get the trees sold, get the plant to get the CRP planted and some of that valuable role in the county.
So I will circle back with them. I am their liaison and ask how the interview process is going. I know I thought they were going to try to re-advocate maybe in some other publications to get some interest. Maybe a farmer kid looking to move back home to come back and work in that field. So, all right, we're a couple of minutes before 7:00. So if we just want to wait just a smidgen longer. So we're official? If we need an official break, yeah, we certainly can. And motion in a second for a five-minute break. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. We are on break for five minutes. Go back into regular session, yes.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Joe, to go back into regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay? Motion carries. We're now back in regular session. So, Mr. Better?
This is the second reading of an application made by Matt Evans writing our E part for the purpose of rezoning the following property from Article 7, Moderate Gifted Real Residential R2, to Article 13, Planning and Development DVD. That property is described in Nevedd Edition as plotted in book S10, page 56, accepting thereof, there from Lot 1, Nevedd Edition, as plotted in book S17, page 135, and accepting lots 9 and 10, Nevedd Edition as plotted in book S20, page 228, in the northwest quarter of Section 17, Township 94 North, Range 56 West, of the Fifth Prince Balden Meridian, hereafter Ercia, as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E911 address is to be determined on Porton and Utica Avenue. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Yankton County Commission may recommend adoption of the Yankton County Ordinance Number 2020.
So at this time, I will open the floor to public comments. Again, it will be very similar to last time. Every speaker will have three minutes. And right now it's 7:05 and we will allow three-minute speakers until 8:05. If at some point there's time left and you'd like to speak again, you're welcome to get up and speak again. So Joe is going to be the official timekeeper this time. Oh, well.
There's some people here that weren't here last time.
Dan, you're absolutely right. You caught me on that one. So, Mr. Evans, before I do that, come on up and explain your project real quick.
If I may, I think it might be easier if everybody else talked that way to answer the question that they do have. And if I okay if I talk after them?
Is that fine, Dan?
Traditionally, what we have done, like a C and P or something, is you'll explain the property and give him maybe five minutes to reply. But it's your call however, whatever you guys want.
Why don't you come up and just explain kind of your intent and then we'll go back to the rebuttal later. Getting ahead of myself.
I don't know if you guys remember, when I talked the last time, you guys wanted to restate kind of the whole scenario as I did at the last meeting. And what I was doing.
Probably just a good overview because this is essentially treated as somebody, you know, that wasn't that person.
Perfect. Okay. Hello, my name is Matt Evans. I recently bought Lake Alexis and surrounding lakes, property total 56 acres. I grew up on Lake Alexis. Almost 30 years ago, I watched the lake develop in the late 90s into a ski ramp and slalom ski courses and watched as they prepared the lakefront property for development, doing dirtwork and expanding the lake. Over the years, the development has slowed down and I would like to finish what was once started. Lake Alexis holds great memories to me and is a place that will always be a big part of my life. It has always been my dream to restore it how it once was and better the beautiful lake area development. I would like to continue the idea that was started in the 90s. Build a very well-maintained lake with beautiful trees, landscaping, and an outdoor feeling. This will be a very clean development with strict rules to keep the lake a beautiful place. The lake area will be very spacious between 12 lake homes on the northwest side of the lake and a combination of 20 lake homes and 8 camp sites on the south side of the lake. The water, electric septic systems have all been approved and engineered by the utility companies and contractors. This is my dream and I'd like you guys to help me make my dream come true.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and do the public comment now.
Thank you.
Come on up.
I'm Chuck. Madam Chair and members of the legislature. This proposed project in front of us this evening has a lot of issues, a lot of issues that are concerning to several property owners in the Lake Alexis area. You are aware of how Lake Alexis, when it overflows, spills into my property on the east side and the south side, and then proceeds on continuing into the property. And doing so, this takes out several acres of production for us. And upstream, some in the field, it backs up in the water and makes it saturated where we can make productive crop there either. Mr. Evans has stated that he'd like to have a well there at his property and keep the lake at a level that we don't know what that level is. If he determines what that level could be, that could certainly have an adverse effect on all of us area property owners. That's okay, could happen when we do it. In doing so, you know, we could have, I was going to say so whether or not the well gets turned on to raise the water level some. You know, if he is going to be in charge, that's kind of like having the box in charge of the head house. You know, we need to have a lot more details what his plan is and these details defined in writing, so we know what we have to work with. You know, he has stated that he will install riprap on the north side of Lake Alexis to control erosion on 305th Street. But he also has the intention of cleaning out the west portion of Lake Alexis. And in doing so, will we need riprap on the west side of the lake up against the County Road, number 435th Avenue? You know, his proposed development has homes that cap around and stuff. We don't know what those distances are, what those setbacks are from the other property owners, including myself. There's so many details that are not, that have not been provided to us in order to make this project go forward. Now, Mr. Evans does have the right to enjoy his property, but we have the right to enjoy our property too. And if there are adverse implications that result from us being able to enjoy our property resulting from the actions that he did, that's just not right. All right, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Tom.
For anyone speaking. That means you're thankful.
Hello, my name is Carrie Ramsey. I live at 122 Lake Shore Drive in the Nevedd Edition. Mr. Evans has repeatedly stated that he is fulfilling the dream of owning Lake Alexis, living in Lake Alexis, and developing a beautiful and spacious community. I agree that living on Lake Alexis is a
I agree that living on Lake Alexis is a dream come true. It was our family's dream too. When we bought our home little over five years ago, we were so happy to be able to give our children the opportunity to live beside a small lake where they could enjoy nature, wildlife, fishing, swimming, and boating with friends and family, and the serene and quiet bent that our country living. We were reassured that covenants and as a real estate agent supplied us along with the R2 zoning that although we may have a few more neighbors build homes on the Neved edition in the future, there would be no more than approximately 12 single-family homes. Now we fear our dreams may be shattered. As you can see in the pictures, Lake Alexis is beautiful, is beautiful, and has wide open spaces to view. Right now, we do not have to worry about lots of people, noise, or safety. Our children can swim, boat, and fish without worry. Right now, and for over 20 years, Lake Alexis has only been able to support one motorized ski boat at a time. We have been able to work with the current neighbors that have homes on Lake Alexis to share time with boating. Can you imagine the nightmare of trying to schedule or organize the people of 112 dwellings if Mr. Evans fulfills his dream? The safety issues are beyond imagination. These pictures show you a beautiful and spacious community. Are our dreams not as important as Mr. Evans? But that being said, I have a few questions that I would like to request be considered before we zone. Mr. Evans does not own the whole lake, as he states. Each of us own a bit of lakefront property. The Petersons and Schenckles actually own a fair amount of the land under the lake on the east side. I'm not sure, but I would think Mr. Evans would need permission from us to do anything that affects the lake levels. And then I'm hoping the idea is there. Mr. Evans does not seem to understand the drainage issues that were clearly stated by the surrounding farmers that have worked the land around Lake Alexis for generations. Can I be guaranteed that the septic systems and drainage fields he will be implementing will not cause an adverse impact to current drainage as well as Lake Alexis water falling? Tying into that question, where does Mr. Evans plan to push all the snow during the winter months? And how will that affect drainage, especially in the low-lying areas he plans to develop? Where will Mr. Evans have residents as well as their guests park their vehicles? And if he allows boating on the lake, which I assume he's going to, I don't know, where will these watercrafts be parked? Looking at his current site plan, can he honestly tell me there is enough room? Will our safety be ensured with a timely patrol from our county law enforcement? And who is going to guarantee this? And speaking of safety. Oh, can't hear you.
That's you.
Okay.
You want to just finish that statement?
Okay, yep. Speaking of safety, as you know, 435 Avenue has no shoulders on the side of the road. I would assume these new residents would like to go for walks around the area. I do not see that Mr. Evans has any sidewalks available for residents. Chances are that we'll be walking on 435 Avenue. Isn't this a safety concern as well? Thank you guys for your time.
Would anyone else care to make a public comment? Come on up.
I'm Ryan Heine. I don't live anywhere near this property. I do the next two Matt's latest parts that he built down near those park lake. I actually live right next to it on the hot bar. And one of the things I do want the board to consider is the roads. As she agreed just to mention parking on the side of the road, pedestrians on roads. It's pretty wild and open. I've noticed in Matt's plan, some of these roads are shared with residences. Who's maintaining those roads now? Is there a road agreement? I really strongly recommend that there's a road agreement in place before approving this plan. You know, just like the water, just like the issues with the lake levels, those agreements probably should be in place before the plan approved. Additionally, you know, if you're talking about snow removal, you know, right now, I do all snow removal. And that doesn't do any snow removal on the road that we share. So it's a serious extent. He doesn't use the road manager, so you know, it's questionable because he does have full-time residents there. There's a lot of issues. These RV parks are popping up all over. They're really getting started to flood the county. And when I look at the ordinances, I see that the ordinances are really not addressing them well, but not quite a campground, or not quite a trailer park. And I really think that we should be getting the ordinance that's caught up before we go too far down the road with these RV parks.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans? Do you have a question? Mr. Heine?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I wanted to talk to Mr. Heine. Sorry, Mr. Evans. When you when the turn of heart located next to you, when it was developed, were all the promises and covenants that were agreed upon completed?
We've been there for three, we've been neighbors for three years. We still have no road agreements. We have no shared maintenance.
Was that a condition of the rule that go develop?
Yes, when I look back at the minutes, I do see that there is a condition on Matt's permit saying that it needed to have that there needed to be a road agreement in place for shared road.
Or was it that?
And yeah, there's not been anything done. You know, I had contacts with Matt in the past. Not heard anything about anything going forward or anywhere, so a little bit of this very slow act, nothing really happening. Doesn't have much of a buffer with our property, so it's.
But are there any other things that were, I believe, that have to be done and haven't been completed?
Well, I do believe in the original plan that he submitted, he did have a tent around his old property to sort of give a buffer. He really only has a fence just along the road.
So sorry.
Yeah, and another small detail too is like, I think that's saying someplace in his drawing where he makes a loop and it comes back out on who, essentially a shared public right-of-way. And that creates a lot of excess traffic between this entrance and exit. That's really kind of it really slowed down the traffic for everyone else that has to use that road.
That ruined really the single lane road.
The road that we shared is really just a single lane yet where it's really supposed to be.
Only one street in total.
Yeah.
The other is a driver.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I can't think of anything else off the top of my head, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to make a public comment?
I'm Scott Hughes. I own property of the north. I guess I would ask permission to table this and send it back to the zoning board. For all the reasons previously stated, I think there needs to be more than one plan. I think you probably need to hire an architect and have everything drawn up to scale so you know exactly what setbacks are, where they are, and how they're going to affect the surrounding area. You know, I think you should probably hire an engineer. You know, Mr. Chop's land drains across where he has five houses proposed. You know, we probably need some elevation studies, maybe a drainage plan on how that affects him and the neighbors. And then I want to talk about safety. You know, Carrie mentioned safety before. I don't know if you guys realize this, but 112 units, figure a four-person family, right? That's 448 people. That will be the second largest population. Who's going to patrol it? What are the rules? I mean, it just brings up so many questions that this has to be all in black and white. I'm going to probably talk at the end of the meeting, and I'm going to ask you guys to amend the ordinances for R1 and R2 and get rid of this damn campground. There has to be a more clear-cut, fine answer for campgrounds. If you look at all these campgrounds around the state, you look at Groom Tree, mile, mile and a half away from a state recreation area. You look at all the ones down by the lake, one, two miles away from a recreation area, or the you look at all the ones all the way up to Platte, a mile to recreation. Well, this might be a recreation area. It is not a recreation area big enough to support 112 units plus big distance. Neighbors. It's preposterous to think that they can support them in. What's it going to do? I mean, speaking for me personally, if I have any complaints, I'm not calling Mr. Evans. I'm calling the county sheriff. I'm going to have it legally documented. That's just an extra cost to the county. If you want to talk about riprap, fine. He can support the north road. I think last time he mentioned that he was going to do the west road too. Has he contacted BYU Electric that just buried an underground line there in the right-of-way? Because I'm sure they'll love to have five feet of riprap on top of the electrical line. And I mean, it's just things like that, but just too much gray area. I contacted the state. He doesn't have any permits. He's a commercial. He's going to be a commercial business. He's going to make money. He's not selling. He's not a developer. He's going to make money off of this. So it has to be considered commercial. He doesn't have a septic farm. He doesn't have a permit. Commercial business has to have a septic. He doesn't have one. I guess that's my time. That's time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to make a public comment?
Okay. I have a comment also. A lot of these concerns are, I'll let you guys. However this turns out tonight, I do want to express that you guys have taken the time and done your due diligence, and I appreciate that greatly. A lot of the questions that I submitted there. So my son is 18, and I work on this project a little bit together, which is kind of nice. And so I thought we would just take a walk around this property so that everybody can see what we're all talking about. I may mistake, I caught this mistake. So this is the entrance. Oh, where we are. Right here is the new entrance. He just put it, it's not in this picture because it's an old picture. And so this is where he's going to have a boat dock, parking lot, and a building somewhere in here if you look at your plans. And I will submit and prove, it's not hyperbole, that this white area is actually a watermark later in the presentation. But if you, this is, this is 1.14 acres to the high-water mark. You just call this outside line. 1.4 acres for a boat dock, a parking lot, a building, and four homes along this edge. I also took the liberty of making a 40-foot road. He has, one of his stipulations is a 35-foot road. I don't know what setups are, but I added five feet because it does butt exactly up to Mr. Chop's fence. And that road is right here. You can kind of see yellow is above, red is the outside of the 40-foot road. And I might be a foot or two off, so, but, so I can keep moving. 1.4 acres at high water, one and a half acres average, and 1.87 if it dries up. Four homes and all that. Moving along, plus or minus five acres. It's, this is really steep, and he might be a really good developer and maybe get a slope and do something, but in this area right here, he has, I think, 20-some homes. And you can count countless campgrounds. But what I want to focus on is this area right here. Remember I said I think this white line is kind of average watermark? See how it comes into bobs? You can kind of see a depression here. See our 35-foot road coming right here? All right. This is the second peninsula if you look at his plan. So this line right here is actually water. That dark line you see, that's actually water. So say this little water all the time. He's got 1.15 acres. Say I'm right. And this is actually possible mid-level water. He's got 0.16 acres to put six homes and 19 campsites. This is the last area where he has four homes. Same thing, but this is average water. He's got 0.18 acres to put four homes. So here's his new driveway. Do you come in around? This is the area where we have four homes, a boat dock, parking lot, and a building. Same picture, and this is this kind of high-water mark. Here's the driveway. Here's a picture with a school bus in it. Same picture, not, we're close, guys. Can I get a few minutes for my son, 18-year-old son, Cole? I'm almost done.
How you find time to?
Well.
So I know I've had to kayak in the last five years. I've had a kayak right here. This is the road. That's the school bus. We have five homes, a boat dock, a circle drive, buildings, and parking. This is coming around the corner. So this is the first part of the big peninsula. See how low that is? He's got four homes in there. He's going to be filling that in if he's going to put four homes unless they're on clothes. This is the east side of the big peninsula. This fence post, that fence post is about 17 feet apart, so imagine two of them. See the reeds? We're building a road right here, guys. This is just coming out in the field where I said that depression was. You can see even this year, with average waters, God could not do anything with that because water is up in his property. This is just beyond that where I said we're building the road. Here's the reeds. Here's the fence. We're building a 35-foot road. This is the fence. Those are the reeds, just rotating, just demonstrating. It's not 35 feet. This has six homes along this edge of these reeds. There are 19 campsites right here and a 35-foot road. Different take. Actually, there are six homes. I didn't see one. Different picture, same area. 19 campsites, six homes, one septic tank, and a circle drive right there. This is where I contend that I'm not working in hyperbole. This is the last bend to the south. That is a property, and as you can see, it is in the marsh. So we're building a 35-foot road that way into the water. And there goes your road to the last four homes through those reeds. This is like as deep as you can go looking towards the lake of those last four homes. Notice the brown change? That's the reeds. This is, this is where even Mr. Evans contends. So this tree is on bobs. Give her a take, guys. This is water. You can tell. And even that contends there's no building there. This is that little spot. You've got a 35-foot road, four homes, built right there. And this is just showing the depression. This is where the boat dock would be, four homes around that edge right there. And you'll see in this, I know I'm way over my time, but I would just one last statement. In short, I will submit the plan before you is short on details and required to be working. Admittedly, I am not a developer and may be misinformed, but I just cannot envision this project being completed. I envision something similar to the hotel behind Prime Camp in my backyard. However, Mr. Evans is a developer and seems committed to spending four to five million dollars to prove he can complete this project. So if Mr. Evans is so committed, I do believe our best protection is this plan being completed to the cud mechanism. Therefore, I ask you to send this project back to planning and zoning so that all of these details can be developed, submitted, and documented properly. Thank you again for all your time.
Thank you. Would anyone care to make a public comment? We're nowhere near an hour, so if anyone would like to speak again.
I have one question.
You bet.
As Carrie indicated, there are six owners on this lake, and he's going to monetize that shared asset. Will we, as court owners of that asset, be compensated for his monetization of our shared asset? And will we be compensated for potential erosion because of the increase? I want to put one other piece of perspective out there. I got on Google Earth, measured every boat parking spot at Marina, at Midway, and at Gavin's Point. There's less than 100 places to park a boat, all those put together. If we have 112 people that want to rent space on the lake, I'm guessing they're bringing a boat. I think, I think the rest is in there, but I have a lot of time, so thank you.
My name is Bill Chackey. There was another thing that's not been brought up tonight, and that is, where's he going to get this water flow itself? I think there's like half a dozen spots where rural water I'd say there's like half a dozen spots where rural water, it's always got, well, six houses, honey, plenty of game water, the rest will involve, the well water is pretty tough this point in the season. Uh, it's got, it's a lot of salt lake, maybe using salt lake, and you know, all that rust up there. And so it's not a very good potential for a water source either. But, that's the thing that has been addressed and a whole part of the discussion.
Thank you.
I didn't address that. Uh, Mike Mutter approved that he does have approval for a two inch meter pit. One hook up. He's gonna feed a hundred and twelve sites with one two inch pipe. Mike said, well, maybe he'll bury an underground system, and maybe he'll go over ground, and he hung up on me. So I don't, and I didn't push it after that, but I do know confirmation from Mike Mutter and from Johnson Engineering that he's got one two inch meter pipe to feed this direction.
I ran out of time first time. Um, I'm gonna ask this question again, I asked it a couple weeks ago to Mr. Evans, he never answered it. Twice he stated that he wants to continue and finish the project that was started. And if you look, it's the project that was started was twelve additional lots. So if that's what his true dream is, why are we even here, Harvey, and this? And I'd like you to answer that when we talk later, cause twelve houses is way different than a hundred and twelve well.
Other public comments?
Frank Carlcheck here, a property owner, or my family's property owners, upstream and below stream. Uh, looking into it since the last time, uh, there is a blue line stream coming into it, I got it from Gary, in the watershed, so it's a blue line stream. So it is now gold water going into that lake. And now there is not a blue line coming out of this lake. It kinda builds up and ponds over, and then, like I explained last meeting, that goes through Bob Chop, then through Bill Chackeys, and then through us, and through Hines, and on down streams and everywhere. We spent a lot of money down there, I don't know if you guys been out there, including ditches and great gravel roads, I see the championship brings gravel road to the west and everything else. So a lot of issue is an issue. And then, if he's gonna be putting all these houses there, he is gonna lose surface here, if he's gonna build it up, flat out, but that lake, it's gonna be less compact, compacting, because we got surface water there that keeps that water, we have a high water table in the area. There's hardly any houses with basements in it, if you do have a basement, you have horse on pumps running and everything. It's just the way it is. And, so that's my concern, and my other concern, he said that lake doesn't raise up more than edge. I know the stream coming from the west through our place, our dam's not full, and the dam below us is not full, or the whole pond. But I noticed yesterday, when I go by there three, four times, the water level came up. How much did it come up over the weekend? For the, I don't know if we even got in the train, but I do know that water level came up a lot. I can see the water, both the cattails and everything on it, south end while I was driving the highway, so it does come up quick. And we didn't have that much, we're gonna be through, be too dry for sure. So, alright, that's my concern, is the water going downstream and everything else, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments before I close public comment? Alright, at this time we will close public comment. Mr. Evans, you're welcome to come up.
Okay, hopefully I answer everybody's questions here, I tried to get everything. I, I believe most of the concern here, starting, would be the flooding. I've, I've said this two or three times now. I'm not going to be raising these lake levels. These lake levels as of right now, uh, are not flooding anyone out, as far as I, as far as I know. It's, it's not about keeping the lake levels even at the level that they are at right now. It's about keeping the lake from completely drying out, which would take at least five to seven feet of water loss. Um, in the shallowest end on the west end slough, it's about five to seven feet right now. So it would have to go down that far. Um, I did apply for permits through DE and R. And, uh, one of the concerns was, uh, filling in certain parts of these lake, this lake, where there are no water, but could be water. Imagine, uh, if I dig out this lake on the west hand side, okay, where it's seven feet, if I dig it out to twelve to fourteen feet, that is gonna hold way more water on that side, um, and have a better flood control for the people around it. The deeper that lake is, the less water I will have to put in it with the well. It will take a very long time for that to happen. Um, right now in the deep part, it is, at the beginning of this year was about fourteen feet deep, I think it's about ten to eleven right now, uh, which is still a fine, a mid-level for me. Um, I did talk to Frank Carlcheck last week, trying to get a meeting with the farmers to get on the same page and kinda figure something out. So, we know they don't have issues, and I text Frank, and I never got a text back from that. So, if we have to work something out here, or whatever it takes, uh, to get everybody on the same page, I'm more than willing, I just don't get a lack of feedback when I try to talk to these people. Um, setbacks, um, I believe there was setbacks on the, it's on those two that you guys have, I think it was in, I have it maybe. Um, as far as setbacks on there, the only setback that I should have to worry about, I believe, well, I guess on the north side, it might have to be setback so far from four thirty fifth. Um, I hope that one is on there, but I believe Bob was the one who brought, brought up the setback. From his south side over there, which the side is twenty-five feet, if I believe, right? First I left, um, which that will be on there. Um, Matt Rumsey's wife brought up twelve homes. I've measured it in front of the board, um, and come up with twenty-one acres, our two zoning allowance for, uh, one house per acre. So I don't know where the twelve homes comes from, I've mentioned this also in past meetings. Boat traffic, uh, she also brought up, um, I am in control of the boat traffic on there. Uh, the people out there will not be ski boats, uh, and stuff, like if there is, there might be one, as they stated. Pitcher men with a no wake zone, such as Lake Marandale, um, where they have a no wake zone, there is uh, shorelines and stuff that are close there, and I've also mentioned that I put riprap on three oh five on that side, as Bob Chop said. It does have erosion problems there. Uh, there again, my fishing boats will not have huge wakes to be rooting the road, but I will put riprap on that north side to satisfy. A snow removal was another thing. All of these roads are not shared roads, these are all our roads. If they want, uh, on the, there is an easement from three oh five through the Arneses and Lanes and Rumseys. Uh, if they want, I can push that road back, or, uh, there's gonna be nobody there in the wintertime for the most part. If they do come there, like mine are gated off right now at my other parks. If they do want me to put in some kind of snow removal to plow it, as long as I do have people there, then I'll do that, otherwise I just won't have people there on their side in the wintertime. And I'll just make sure that it's, whether it's just seasonal on that side, or whatever it has to be for an agreement. Mr. Heine brought up that road agreement, as we talked about. So, I would, when I first started, um, I had a kind of a tough time getting along with my neighbors. I had to dig out the entire ditch that wasn't even mine, uh, in front of Light Tail Run. Uh, I had to put in a three thousand dollar culvert, and I had to excavate it all out by myself. I fixed all the water drainage problems, and I fixed all the potholes in the road by myself. Uh, as for Mr. Heine saying that he plows his side, uh, I do agree with that. The people that are there year round right now are in my first loop. In my first loop, that is plowed by the trailer park gentleman to the south of me from California. He has no problem plowing that for me, um, and piles it directly to my driveway, which then turns into gravel that goes to Mr. Heine's. Um, I feel no need for me to plow beyond my first loop, uh, just because I don't have anybody beyond my first loop. So that's my defense on that. The fence was another thing. I just put up a very expensive fence, eight foot tall privacy fence with lattice, all the way along my south side there. Uh, I did talk to Mr. Heine, I think it was this last year, about a fence in between, uh, his property and mine. My home parking goes right up to the, the road easement there, and they just changed that to where they're turning it into like a dough road. That's a completely separate, uh, whichever for my other park. But, I cannot, uh, put a fence in that right of way over there. My boat parking is right there, if I did, I'd have to get rid of all my boat parking. That was another thing that I got brought up, I have seventy sites over there with boat parking. My boat parking is four hundred and fifty feet long by thirty feet, uh, in width. So, uh, about half of that got filled up for boat parking. I do not let people park their boats in my contract, I do not let them park on any of their sites, no side by sides, no four wheelers, none of that. Everything has to be parked, all boats have to be parked in the boat storage there to answer their question. As far as boat parking at the lake. So there, there will be, uh, significant, adequate amount for boat parking and vehicles, uh, as we stated with the road limits also. Being thirty-five feet wide, uh, what that'll accommodate three vehicles wide, but only two. Let's see here. Engineer was brought up. I have, in the last five years I've been doing this, I have never hired an engineer to do any of my work. For Yankton RV Park down there, that had huge water issues when I first came in. I did all the excavation myself. Now that place flows great. Where the ditch still, like I told you, I dug by myself, and culvert, and, and everything else, it now drains, I, all the way down, uh, dear bull bar there, I even dug out culverts all the way down to the river by myself when the flood came through here with the drainage in like March or something, and there was a foot of water in that trailer court, and I dug out all of that to get that drain down to the river. Let's see here, uh, patrol, safety, uh, stuff like that. I have camp posts there twenty-four hours a day, both my parks, um, to watch over everything. Uh, we do have very strict screening process. Uh, another thing was brought up, I think it was two minutes ago, about renters applications and stuff. I do have those, uh, for the sake of citizens, they were worried about sex offenders and stuff like that. I have all of those rental applications, uh, so that does not happen again. Um, let's see here. One person stated that all of these campground are within a mile of certain recreation areas. Mayville Store has an RV park, I know it's not very big. KOA has a very big RV park, um, out on the other side of town, it's nowhere near Lewis and Clark. Uh, these things are just getting bigger. Uh, Randy Goldens is a quarter mile from Timberland Park, which has, I don't know, a hundred homes, something like that, and I'm within six homes on, on this lake, and he's right next door to, uh, Curtis Oliver, just built eighty tiny homes on his, and he's next to a half a million dollar houses. Kind of twenty of them, including my home, uh, which is a huge home development there, I don't know, he's within in a quarter mile, a hundred homes, something like that. Let's see here. Uh, the riprap, uh, what is also a concern on that right of way on four thirty fifth? You cannot have riprap in it right of way. DOT will not let it happen. There are certain guidelines and regulations, the pitch that you have to have on your ditch going in and out. I have to be that far enough. And I don't know if I have to build it up, I guess, I don't really think that's a concern, I guess it's up to you guys, if you guys think four thirty fifth is a concern. It's been fine for the last couple of years. I think three oh five is more of a concern to myself, but if you guys think we, we need to do something on four thirty fifth, we can figure something out. Septic permit. There is no septic permit. I have the paperwork in the packet from, uh, the DE and R. What happens is, if this gets approved, you draw up a plan, okay? There's no application, you draw up a plan, uh, not me, it would be, they would be the one doing it. They draw up the plan, they give it to them, they say, hey, everything looks good, within the right amount of feet that you need to be, you're at the right size, a septic system, which is ten, uh, ten units per fifteen hundred, or twenty units per three thousand gallon. There's certain guidelines you have to meet, but there is no permit. There is no application, and I've said this the last three meetings also, um, as far as that goes. The DE and R permit that I did apply for is for the dig. That is, uh, just for cleaning out all the reeds on the west hand side in the slough over there. Uh, let's see here. How Matt Rumsey is drawing. I stated the mathematics in the last reading, um, mathematics don't lie. I, I don't know what his drawings were, I really don't, but, uh, all of the mathematics that I stated, I measured out the acres in front of you guys. I think it might have been the zoning, actually. I don't really, sorry, but I measured it out, um, it was fourteen acres on the south, a little bit less, and then a little bit less than seven acres on the north side, when I measured it out. Uh, if it is a little bit less, there is a huge hill over there also that will be leveled out. Um, it's much higher terrain than the rest of it. Uh, we will be flattening it, so we have some kind of grade to work with, it's pretty hilly on that side. The BYU Water, so they're concerned about the water flow on that side. Currently with my seventy sites that I have over at the RV park, I have a three quarter inch hookup off of a six inch line, okay? So my, my outlet, when you actually tap into it, is three quarter inch. This will be a two inch, which is, the water is over twice the size, okay? Or it is two inch. Now, I have, uh, wanting to intimidate lines at my other park and water lines at every single one of my sites, and I have adequate water pressure for all of my sites over there, okay? And that seventy sites occupy a three quarter inch tower on this one. There's a three inch line out there with a two inch tower off of this, okay? You're getting a lot more volume off of this, and my water lines are gonna be a lot bigger than the intentional. So you make up your volumes when you pipe your system, okay? And BYU Water stated it also when I talked to Mike Mutter and, uh, engineer, Johnson Engineering. He said, you know, you, you're good on this tab. Anything you do after that, if you run out of water pressure, um, then that's your own fault. No matter what, it will not affect, uh, the current landowners according to Johnson Engineering. The, there was a gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, uh, he was talking about me making this stream come true according to, uh, the current, the first model, um, in nineteen ninety-six, when I first started making it. I believe, uh, when I stated it, as I stated- When I first started making it. Um, I believe, uh, when I stated it, as I stated it, I, I want to make this dream come true and better. Okay. But, but what I mean by that is I don't think that a ski lake would be very good out there. I think a ski lake, um, is not something I'm looking for. I'm looking for outdoors feeling with fish room. And not a lot of traffic. If you put something like, um, if you guys have ever seen or heard Catfish Bay in two falls. It's a big ski place over there. You train over there, you do your slalom scores, your slalom course and your jumps and stuff like that. It's very heavily trafficked. There's boat waves all over, you can't fish. I do not like that. I, I go out on Lewis and Clark on the weekdays and if I go out there on the weekends, I'm an angry person. Uh, there's jet skis and ski boats all over you trying to enjoy the outdoors and just be on a calm lake. And, and that's what I want to do here. I, I don't want to make this a uh, a very packed place like that. I, I know you guys hear these numbers like, um, I'm sorry, it's a hundred, uh, a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and fifteen, but, um, I'm sorry, I'm flustered, but, um, it's, I know it sounds like a lot, but it, it works out to where like half the people show up one weekend and then half the people on the next, they're, they're never there. Like my other parks, I have seventy and my one park over there. And if you go there on the weekend, there is almost, there's plenty of parking spots. The whole way through it, um, the traffic is very limited. It, it's not a packed place like Lewis and Clark. Uh, it's really not. I just, I just want it to be that outdoors, that outdoor place. Um. I think that's everybody's questions, uh, I can remember, um.
Matt, Matt, I got a question.
Okay.
It was brought up, potential flooding for the landowners in the district. And, uh, so what are you going to do about that? Uh, would you be willing to keep the lake at a set level? So that when water comes back in, it's not flooding anymore.
Yes, um.
So what's your plan for that? What kind of guarantee can you get?
Um, I, I would like to continue on like I tried to talk with Frank, uh, about that. I don't know why. Um, maybe didn't get my text. I, I don't know, but I did talk to him.
Hey, I'll speak for him if you want me to. Nice to find that.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I want him to have a plan. So, you know, Mr. Ted.
Sorry, what was it last week? Happening the day after, two days after I talked to him. I'm still busy harvesting. And at first we started a little rough with our conversation, but we talked about it and we talked about and drainage district. But then I also got Gary's paperwork of the whole drainage district in that area. It becomes, and then I'm doing some research on it. It's going to become a big project to do a drainage district. Because you gotta get everybody that's in that drainage district, that water that comes in and out all the way down. Involved. So now we're not talking about me, Bill, Bob, Hines to get to the blue line. Now we're talking about people upstream three miles and all the way down to the Jamboree. And I'm still busy harvesting, so I don't know where that's going to go. And, and I, and I did see your text this morning. He did text me this morning. Yeah, I was working on the pound line and still trying to see if it's on for this next weekend. And so it's going to become a, a bigger project and I've talked to one other guy in the area that's trying to do it. He's worked on it for just about a year and hasn't gotten anywhere.
Okay, well, I agree with you on wrong. You just, you don't want to get flooded. You don't want him to pump the lake so full when the inch rain comes out.
Right here.
What happens is basically there's natural up and down. And like everybody was saying, the water cable is very high in that whole area. So that's where a septic system is not going to work properly. Plus that water cable, it's probably down when it's dry. It's gonna, if that lake is full, a two inch rate will put two feet of water in my farm. Just a two inch rate when it's, you know, like the spring, when we got that three inch rate, I had two feet of water. And then about three, four days later, you get a five inch rate. Then you sit there with water for two, three weeks around the whole park. And correct me if I'm wrong, but your concern is with him pumping it. You don't want him to pump it full. So when there's an empty rain, I mean, you know, if it rains seven inches tomorrow, you, there's not a lot. You know, other guys are going to be flooded. But your concern is with him pumping it throughout. So I think we need to have some, you know, what it sounds like is you just don't want the lake to dry out and all your fish to die. You don't want to get flooded. So I think we need some agreement here that you will only turn on at X level. And you need to keep a minimum of D minus.
Set that up too.
And, well, I just, I want to have some, if, if this gets approved, I want, in any degree that it won't get pumped unless it's at a certain.
Uh, I just got the letter today from, uh, D E N R. You do need, uh, like you saying, specific, very, very specific. You need, uh, exactly, uh, how it's going to get, I'm going to help you need, uh, the, the pumping. Uh, you need to set water level as far as that goes. Um, I, I think the best way we can do it, um, if I, if I dig that side out, okay, and we're at fourteen feet saying, that, that lake's quite a bit different, okay? That lake, um, it's pretty much, it's not fourteen feet in the middle and then tapers off. Okay. It's fourteen feet in the middle, it's a twelve feet, okay? All the way to almost the edges and then it comes up. Okay. If I dig that out over there and we have a fourteen foot to twelve foot level, that lake can be six feet deep, which is a lot of water to dump, okay? It could be six foot lower than what it is, I don't know, five feet lower of what it is right now. And that would be the point where it'd be like, okay, we're five feet low, which we were already fourteen feet, so it'd be nine feet low. That takes a lot of water to fill up a nine foot, uh, fifty-six acre lake, okay? So we figured if we set a state, if I get together with everybody and I say, okay, uh, what, where are you guys happy with? We set a high level water state and we say, hey, it does not go over this. And then it does not go under this. And I said, I think that would be a great idea.
We need to know that tonight though, because we're waiting for tonight and, and maybe it's better off if we just don't allow pumping for now and so later on.
Jurisdiction, can you guys do that? Like is it under your jurisdiction to stop making pumping?
If it's a P U B, I think we can make that as a condition of what you're doing. And here's something, yeah. You know, I think we all need to realize if we, if we don't approve this, Max could just go out and build these houses anyway. And do whatever he wants. We don't have any control. If in this plan unit development, we can try to do some controls that help he goes out, that he doesn't have to do if he do a plan or if he do a permit. And so maybe the best thing to do is specify that the original pumping now and if we want to come in and we open the D in our checklist, then maybe you come back with the kill. We want growth. We want to protect people, uh, out there not too. And so that's, that's my concern with it. And until, until you can get a plan, the pumping, you know, like that's just one of those. Fifteen minutes.
So. Hey, well, the other thing is you can dig it out. There is a, in that area, the water table there, that lake's, the water table is about six, seven feet right now if you're.
Uh, well, not, not the top of the water level.
Well, the static level in the new area is probably lost six feet down, you know, a bit more. It'd be starting to get down right now.
That's so late. It's already at fourteen.
Yeah, but you, even if you dig it out, that water static level in that area will hold it. Because we have our, if I go dig out a mile from your place to the Jamboree Park, I take it back home. Six to seven feet right now, I look up surface form. And I'm.
Whatever you want, it won't keep coming out.
Yes, it will. It will. It's already, I was there this afternoon. There's some shit happening in the ditch and there's water coming out of the third slide down. It's not.
Mr. Hughes.
So, yes, it will. I live across the road to the north. I can dig on top of the hill. Six feet down, there will be water in that hole. Secondly, if he digs out and puts riprap in, like he says on four thirty-five, all you commissioners better plan on replacing four thirty-fifth out of it. If he digs that out and makes it deeper, it's just going to beat that road and it's going to erode it. It was in, Mr. Ketter knows because he talked to my uncle, Bob Ross owns the quarter to the west. He can't be here at back surgery. He donated rock, I think it was in the eighties, to put alongside that road to stop the erosion. Now, if he digs that out, it's just going to beat that road more. What he can't do is he can't build a berm or anything with riprap to protect that or the right of way. Because contrary to what he thinks, as he stated last meeting, wherever his damn thing is, the water does not come in where his boat ramp is. The water comes in directly in the middle of that bay from the slough across the road into that lake. And that comes from a blue line, so he cannot stop that at all.
Okay, so this has been brought up, the blue line, like he said, uh, does show that it comes closer to my entrance on there, I believe. And I actually argued against that and came up with.
There's only one culvert underneath the road.
No, it's not underneath the road. I'm talking about my culvert that I just put in.
I'm talking about the blue line.
So the blue line, I'm pretty sure you see that's right here. It shows that the blue line, uh, comes across like right here on the actual map where it is not. It comes down here and you can see this water level right here. This picture was just taken last week, uh, a few, like a few weeks ago, like a week ago. So the water actually comes in right here. There is still water from here to here right now. This, this is where it comes in at. It's like these days when I agree and complete.
So the blue line comes from here.
That's right.
The drain's in this ditch, but only culvert is right here. No, there isn't one up there.
That, that's not the culvert that I'm talking about. I'm talking about my culvert.
I know what you're talking about. I'm talking about the water coming from the blue line. I have to go underneath the road.
That's a common issue, no?
That's going to be your issue if you.
All right. So at this time, um, we need to bring it back to the commission for us to discuss.
And also I'd like to state too, both low areas, Lake Alexis and the two sloughs to the north. Every year those culverts, because the high water level, level that's been talked or discussed about, those culverts heave over a foot every year and all the residents can attest to that. So by him digging that deeper is just going to cause that problem even more.
So at this time, I think we need to bring it back to the commission to debate.
I disagree. Um, these people were not even at the commission meeting. They got the letters. Um, I feel like they're just holding me back. And honestly, if my, the D E N R approval, I just got the letter through. If it gets approved, I'm just going to start digging, uh, right away. Uh, I don't, I don't need to come, uh, to the commission to do that, um, as long as it's approved by the state. Uh, I want to help everybody out here. I want to, uh, whether it's doing the riprap or whatever, I want to be there to do that. But if they keep holding me back, this, this shouldn't have been discussed.
Well, at this point, it's up to the commission to decide if your project fits our comprehensive plan. So we are going to have that discussion now. So please sit down. So at this time, we do need to walk through what a planned unit development is. And the first thing we need to look at is our comprehensive plan. So I would like to highlight a few things in our comprehensive plan. On page one twenty-six, um, if you've got it in front of you, there are five overarching points under land use. And this is the overview for chapter eight. And those are the investment of public and private capital in real estate and infrastructure. Orderly growth of a variety of housing types. Preservation of the current agriculture practices as viable economic activities, environmental protection, and balancing the cost benefit ratio in providing government services. So if we skip forward to page one thirty-three, under future land use, there is a paragraph there that states, Yankton County's role in influencing development must be guided by the phrase, "in the best interest of the public" and not that of individuals or selective groups. It is important to concentrate on the whole prior to moving forward with additional planning documents, including a future land use map or zoning ordinance. So if we go to one thirty-eight, this is where the comprehensive plan outlines future development. It has goals and then it states policies around different areas, which would be ag, commercial, public, residential, and transitional development. So the goals I will read. The goals of the guiding development within Yankton County are as follows. Provide for orderly, efficient, and economical development. To enhance communication among townships, municipalities, and service providers who have the potential to impact and influence development patterns. To maintain a viable agricultural economy and preserve the rural quality of life. To provide a choice of living environments for county residents. To achieve the maximum efficiency in the provision of public services and facilities. To promote aesthetically attractive development in rural areas. To preserve environmental, historical, and cultural resources. And to provide a transportation system that promotes the safe and efficient movement of people, goods, and services. So those are the goals that we are to keep in mind when you go down to the section. And I'm going to read the ag section because when you look at the area out there, this is in a sea of ag. We have this little blip of an R two.
Yeah, it's also residential zone.
And I just stated that in a sea of ag, we have this little blip of R two. So preserve and protect the ag productivity of rural land by regulating the development of non-farm residential sites. The premature development of agriculture land should be discouraged. Protect the rural area from uses which interfere and are not compatible with general farming practices. And regulate concentrated animal feeding and processing operations to protect environmental quality and minimize conflicts with human activities. And yes, I understand this is technically R two, but it, the neighbors all around are ag. So I do believe it's in our best interest to keep that in the back of our mind. When we go forward to residential development policies, encourage new residential construction to locate on planted lots of record and other parcels which already qualify as building sites. Restrict premature development of residential areas before proper infrastructure needs can be developed. Limit road densities so that current service levels are not exceeded, thereby avoiding the creation of special purpose districts such as sanitary, water, and road districts. Restrict development in areas where unsuitable soils and other physical limitations are present. And discourage strip development along roadways, particularly those which serve as gateways to the municipalities, rural subdivisions, and major activities centers. So on page one forty, there is a summation. Future development should be regulated through land use controls, most likely a zoning ordinance. Any land use regulations incorporated by the county should be designed according to these six basic principles. Compatibility of land uses. Promotion of infill. Reuse of vacant sites within the appropriate districts. Utilization of existing public infrastructure and road systems. Protection of the public health, safety, and the general welfare, and balancing of private citizens' rights and the public interest. Any development proposals which do not follow these principles nor are proposed in the appropriate district should be carefully evaluated before being implemented or approved. So when we go to the planned unit development regulations, we have to keep all of that in mind. So thirteen oh one begins, the provisions of this article.
You're going to read this whole, this whole section?
You're not going to read a good chunk of it for the benefit of the folks in the audience because they don't have a copy. The provisions of this article are to be applied in instances where tracts of land of considerable size are developed, redeveloped, or renewed. A planned development to be eligible under this must be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And that is why I touched on a few of the areas I think are pertinent to this application. Composed of such uses and in such proportions as are most appropriate and necessary for the integrated functioning of the planned development. of the planned development and for the county. So designed in its space allocation, orientation, texture, materials, landscaping, and other features as to produce an environment of stable and desirable character, complementing the design and values of the surrounding neighborhood and showing such unusual merit as to reflect credit upon the developer and upon the county. And it has to be a minimum of five acres. There is one other in thirteen oh-three C that I do want to read, and it says, and this has to do with application procedure. Such other information is may be required by the county planning commission to determine if the proposed planned unit development is consistent with the intent of the district. And this is in a district of R2. I don't know what other district they would be referring to in a planned unit development. So it must be proposed planned unit development is consistent with the intent of the district, and this is R2. So with those things in mind, I do wanna touch on the definition of a campground. And I won't pull it up, but the definition of a campground is for transient people. And this planned unit development just said it needs to reflect stable, stable and desirable characters. So I'm starting to pick up some contradictions here. Long-term versus transient. Year-round folks in a planned unit development. And I think the comment made earlier, and I think it was Mr. Hughes, who said this county really needs to look a little closer at campgrounds. Because technically, in here, that is the definition of a campground is for transient residents. And the definition of a trailer park is for permanent residents who are there to rent. So there, there's kind of this gray area that this county is trying to deal with. And right now is being proposed that we deal with that under a planned unit development. And when you read what's in a planned unit development, that does not fit what a campground is.
Sure, I think the idea of a planned unit development isn't necessarily for a residential home. It, it really can, can be a multitude of things. We, um, this is really very similar to the one we passed with Mr. Golden. That was the same scenario. I mean, it was a campground that had, um, a swimming pool, storage units. And so a P U V can be a lot of. This isn't an.
Okay, so let's get to that point.
This is, and I think we need to. It, it is residentially zoned, and if we deny this, Mr. Evans could go upstairs and go building permits tomorrow for houses and put them where he sees fit. And we don't have any control over the lake or anything. And, and I, and then he doesn't also have to do, uh, doesn't have to do any riprap. So I think this is an opportunity. This area was always designed, designated, or developed back in two thousand and three, even before the map was created. I, I understand the concerns and I think we should focus on, you know, mitigating those concerns and seeing if we can make this work and not just, you know, say no to.
How do we address what, from your perspective, how do we address the fact that the original covenant on that property called for twelve years?
We never, and, and on my time on the planning commission, and yours now, we've never enforced covenants. There was a, a variance we approved out on, uh, off the lake area, six months ago that had covenants on it, and we still approved the variance and we told them that we don't enforce very, our covenants and, you know, it's.
I'm not suggesting that we order something out of the house, I'm suggesting there was covenants on that property and people built four or five houses expecting those covenants to be fulfilled.
So when I pulled up Beacon, and we're gonna go back to the R2, it is zone R2, which are one acre lots. So when I added up, what I felt was the buildable area on the north side of that lake and on the south side of that lake. Um, because I drive by there frequently. I live in that area. And, and I certainly understand when the water's over the road and, and when it's dry and, and where you should and shouldn't build homes. So on the north side, there are ten acres. Four of them, I believe, were developed and six acres would be part of this new purchase, so ten acres. Sixteen acres are to the south, so there's twenty-six acres total. So we're looking at changing sixty-two percent of the district to some other use from an R2 to something else, because it's not R2 after this. It is not R2. So sixty-two percent. And granted, you can try and build a home on the lake, um, and float it out there, and that's an acre, um, but it's not realistic. And I go back to again, that's changing an entire district of something that frankly, maybe from the beginning shouldn't have been, been zoned R2 in the middle of A. But it was ten percent change, um, like the last one we did. We, we did a rezoning, uh, from R1 to R2, R2 to R1, I don't remember, but only ten percent of that district changed. Um, and it joined something next to it that was of the same use. Um, and here, we're completely changing the neighborhood.
If the current homes were spaced somewhat further apart and a bit closer to an R1, and these people petitioned and wanted to have a zoning change, R1 and hundred percent of it changed. Are you sure that they're sure? I'm having trouble following the per, the percentage change. Or if the Norcap wanted to be R1, would we say, well, that's fifty percent of the.
And I, I understand what you're looking at. In my opinion, um, this started as R2 with one acre lots. To go most of it to point one acre lots is with the ag around that requires twenty acre lots is kind of a step in the wrong direction. It's kind of like bringing something more into performance. So if I had a ten acre lot out in A and I come in and I wanna go to a twelve acre, I'm, I'm getting more into performance.
Sherry, if this was over by Beaver Lake where you live, where there is rural zone, would it be appropriate there next to a lake? Would it be more appropriate next to Marindale? I mean, this is a recreational area. It has a lake in there. I, I'm just, if, if this was out in the middle of, um, Allfields, I could get what you're saying, but there's a, a lake here. And there's also residential zoned areas right next to you that's zoned at R2, so should we not develop that? Because that's surrounded by ag? I'm trying to follow your.
Well, and then if it remained R2, and that's what it's zoned at, then they can build homes on one acre lots along that lake. But I do, I do think we need to be careful. There's lots of lakes in this area. Are we going to allow every private citizen to develop, to change to R2 around all their lakes and sell up the lake lots?
Beaver Lake, where you're meant to have a lot of high density rural development, which is happening for lots. And, and most of those lots are actually even smaller than that.
Yeah, and how old are those lots?
But they, but they're, they're zoned that way. People want recreational areas. People want to be around water. I mean, this is, this has always been intended to do something with it. It's, it's really been a failed development for near twenty years and you know, I think we need to have a positive, take a positive look at development. And I'm not saying don't put conditions on it to protect these guys. I'm, I'm the one who suggested background checks at the planning commission. I think we could regulate the water level, have them do riprap. You know, we could, we could make them build it in phases where he develops the northwest quarter first or anything else. I think just saying no to it because, you know, it's next to the canyon. I think it's wrong.
Dan, don't word them, I'm not, that's not the only reason.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you said that much. But I mean, we just, we need to look at this and, uh, it, it's certainly better here than around probably fifty-two or something like that. I think it has some potential. We just need to make it safe and put reasonable conditions on it to promote it.
You know, to address some of the conversations, it's you know, certainly, I, I think we're you hit the nail on the head that it's questionable. They should have been R2 from the start. I don't think when this was made R2, anyone's vision of campground. And they, they obviously did it because there was a covenant. And I don't really wanna get into a covenants. It's not our place to enforce it. Certain that's gonna be debated between the party's thoughts. If there was a lake just like this in, in ag district, I think no questions asked, we wouldn't even be here still. There would have been fifteen in preparation. From where I see it, or the way I see it, I guess is it is old R2. Campgrounds are allowed in R2. I see two, two ways of this moving forward. One is through a P U V, and one is through campground. I don't see a big difference in the way, um, I do feel we have more control of P U V. I do think that if it's only level, and I'll raise my hand, this guilty, guilty, uh, party, but this was not vetted properly. It is lacking a lot of details and a lot of, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions. But either, whenever we decide tonight, I, I've got a pretty good feeling that Joe is gonna pursue this. So we need to I guess, quite accordingly. I don't necessarily buy into some of the arguments that are surrounding by A. And I, I know we need to minimize any impact on, on neighbors. Do that as much as I can, but it's, it's a difficult situation. But, uh, you know, address some of the, in the comprehensive plan we're talking about rezoning, I think I feel that the intent of that was, uh, if we were to do so, let's say a light commercial, we would take that. If P U V is simply packaging of things that are allowed within that district, they go R2. So.
Sherry? Sherry?
It's just been R2s, Terry.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Oh, yeah, is he finished? I, I have a little hard trouble hearing him, but.
Yeah, you're good to go.
Yeah, can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, uh, now, the owner of this property, uh, is that Mr. Weeks? Is that correct?
No, it's Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans, okay. He's the one with, with this property. Is he there?
Yes, he is.
Uh, can, can he hear me?
Yes, he can.
Okay, um, uh, can, can you just wave or something so I can see you where you're at? Or that you, that you're there? Oh, there you, okay, okay. Yeah, I, I've heard you, uh, yeah, good, thank you. Yeah, I just heard you say a lot about, uh, uh, I can see you're really, uh, passionate about this, this dream and, and I just wanna, I just wanna commend you for, uh, trying to bring this in and, and bring it up to speed. Uh, I know that you have opposition. I know that, that your plan is not perfect. Um, but I grew up in this county. I was born and raised here seventy years ago. And I watched Utica, I watched Leesterville, I watched Irene, I watched Gayville and Mission Hill just go downhill my entire life. And, and, and I, I wanna commend you for trying to bring something in here, uh, especially when we have such a resort area like Lewis and Clark. I watched the dam being built. I remember the spillway before it was put in. So I've been around here before all these other people have, because Don and, uh, uh, Sherry, they didn't live here back here when I was little. So I just wanna commend you for doing this. I know you have opposition. I know things aren't perfect. But to be able to bring in more revenue for our county and, and this would be wonderful. Um, I know, like I said, everything, no, everybody's been, everybody done cutting you apart with a fine tooth comb and splitting hairs, because you don't have this right, you don't have that correct right. But I'm gonna tell you something. Two years ago, when they rammed through the hog barns, they, they had opposition there too, but they rammed them through anyway, and we've been fighting them ever since. We've been fighting them for four years, but they rammed it through anyway. Now here they are, really, you know, micromanaging you with this, when you're trying to bring in some, in some revenue for our county. Those pigs don't bring any revenue in for the county people, just for the owner. And they, they accused you of, of, oh, you're just gonna make money off this. Well, isn't that what the capitalistic system is all about? Making money? And if you bring those people in there, they're gonna shop in Yankton. They're gonna go boating in Yankton. They're gonna have other friends come over. They're gonna have other people maybe move here. Because that's what we need. We need more taxpayers to pay for our roads, pay for everything else that we spend money on. And I just wanna thank you. I know that there's two or three people that are gonna vote you out of here as much as they want to, because they always do. And I'm always the one that, that's looking out for the little guy. And, and so I, I hope that, that they would change their mind for one time and, and allow you to go in there. I know there's, these other farmers are complaining about you, but you know what? If you, you said that you had actively wanted to go talk to some of them and they didn't wanna talk to you. Well, you know what? That's their problem, if they didn't wanna talk to you, because a good neighbor talks to people. When I grew up, back in the fifties, sixties, and seventies, people talked about stuff before they were gonna do it. They didn't slam a hog barn across some guy's house and, and then he lived five miles away. They didn't do things that way. The whole world is upside down as we know it today. And you know what? Like I said, I commend you for doing this, to try to bring people in here and revenue. And, and, and I will vote for you in favor to get this done. And like I said, they rammed through the hog barns two years ago. They didn't seem to care about that. They, they figured, well, we'll fix it later, haul roads and everything else, so. And please don't interrupt me. Anyway, but anyway, thank you for, for what you're doing. I know that you're passionate about it. I can tell. I can read people pretty good. So anyway, thank you so much and, uh, and the rest of them can cut your head off as far as I'm concerned, that figure of speech, you know, because they don't want you here. They, they just want pigs. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. So, um, at this point, uh, we can make a, uh, motion for further discussions.
Well, I, I gotta agree with, with what Joe says. This system's gonna go away. The P U V doesn't go through the line, I'm pretty sure we're, we're gonna get a bunch of houses there and we'll be seeing a conditional use for a campground coming very soon. And then we have a, a lot less control on what's being developed here. Gary, do you have anything you'd like to add? Would it be easier to control this with a P U V or a bunch of random houses in a campground C U P? Do you have a preference or, or do you have a recommendation for us anymore?
No, it's certainly up to you as far as which direction you wanna go. We did discuss those options with Mr. Evans when he came in and this was the, the way he wanted to go and, and something he's pursuing. Like you said, there's certainly, uh, more control with the P U V if you're allowed to. Like you said, there's certainly more control of the P U D if you're allowed to stipulate some things, but this was his preference, so.
You know, with, with the P U D, I, I feel that we can put the rip wrap on three oh five. We can set a lake at a level as a condition to protect these guys from the flood. We can mandate that the drainage areas stay open to protect the local residents. We can, we can put on something like background checks or, or, you know, do you guys want trees or, I mean, is there anything that would, that could help you guys?
Yeah, well, they.
What's that? We don't, I don't think we got. Trees to the trees. Yeah, I mean, if I could probably talk to you.
You know, doing trees to.
Yeah, I don't, we, we have to, but I mean, there's things that make this more palatable. You know, I have no problem putting those on as a condition.
Yes, yes, sir.
I agree with what you're saying, true. I understand exactly what you're saying and I'm a hundred percent in agreement. But Mr. Healy, as much as admitted, is this, this project hasn't been vetted. I talked to Matt Turner, and Matt is right, it's not unapproved. Mr. Evans is responsible for completing the checklist, as you'll find on the D N R separate page website. It's a very detailed deal, it's his responsibility, he has not submitted that. You made this, this motion contingent upon these approvals. He has submitted an application to fill the dam and take away our lake access for up to five years, which he has not, he just got a letter today. Requiring further and more details, so he has not received that approval.
So, so one of your issues is the septic systems, is that correct? Is that, is that one of your?
Yes.
Okay, so what about something we've done north of here? Is we could put in a groundwater monitoring well and make it be tested once a year to be in our zone, would that, would that help?
What I would feel most comfortable with is that this could go back to planning zone and be put together properly and completely. On paper, because we just talked with Mr. Hein, where these agreements were agreed to, just like they're, you're discussing right now. And we're three years later and we haven't gotten it. Whereas if we have something that's specific, this map, you cannot look at that plan. Would you build your house on that plan that's not complete, there's no elevations? Your own ordinance requires a North Star on the map. That is the simplest thing to put into a plan, if you look at all of your stuff, I have not seen a North Star on any of those pictures. That's the simplest requirement and it's not there. Send it back to planning zone, make them work up the train engines, the, put this in paper. This is, we're talking a significant change. This isn't something that we can just say, well, whatever, we list six things verbally, that'll, that'll protect you guys. That doesn't give us any protection. We need this developed properly. Send it to this, like Mr. Healy said, he's the one who made the motion, he agrees it wasn't said. And we just send it back to planning zone and have it reduced and developed.
And tomorrow, Mr. Evans goes and gets a committee views, gets all the needs and starts, and starts on building?
We're already have a. And just one other thing, Gary, or, you know, maybe you can correct me. As this is an ordinance change, we can't, we don't have any wiggle room to. I don't believe, we have any wiggle room to change or add to what. That's my, that's why we, a lot of the reasons we can't hash out some of this stuff. I don't think, we can either prove it, I have a second to add.
Prove it conditions.
No, and ordinance, this is a condition.
In granting petitions for amendment or change, the county may prescribe appropriate conditions and safe codes. That's section. Two zero zero three, number fifteen. So I guess I feel that we can, I mean, would you, what's your thought on that, Gary?
Yeah, that's more of a legal issue, but yeah, I, I, I agree that there is some provisions in there for it.
Yeah, is your thought on, on that section two zero zero three, number fifteen, where it says we can prescribe appropriate conditions and safe codes? Is that something that the county commission can do at this point?
I understand.
One other thing that was continued on approval was the water rights permit. And I talked to Mr. Ball, he's charged with the water rights permits, and he did obviously an application for this project. Now, this is about two one fifteen second.
I'm sure I'd like to speak with you, you can keep that my position.
You can go ahead.
I'm opposed to this project. I, I think Mr. Evans works hard and is trying to do the right thing, but. I'm opposed, first of all, because it's an area next to. Would be a P U D located next to, very next to all Ag district land. And we continue to see the diminution of options for farmers. When we continue to move. The public. Out into the farming areas where they can control what the farmers can do. So, starting with that, I have that problem. I, I realize that with both of the county, within half a dozen of these areas, that these buildings can be done. This clearly, clearly in the middle of a ag zone area.
Don, you approve.
I want to continue, Dan. I also have a problem that the, as I understand that the existing covenants on property out there, all for twelve houses. That's what the original owners expected when they bought, built their land. We're not in the business of enforcing covenants, but it is an issue that I think, owing in fairness, should be. Treated between Mr. Evans and the existing five property owners out there now. There should be some kind of agreement made. I have an issue over ownership of the land under the law, I don't know that I understand that completely, and I don't know for sure. What implications that has, but I think that should be answered in planning and zoning before it's brought before us. Parking looks to be a major issue out there. I guess that Mr. Evans, that answered, septic permits. But I, I, I know. If. Mr. Cho decided to put up a. Twenty-four yard finishing unit on the far corner of his land, which is probably fifteen, twenty feet to this. There'd be massive rejection of his ability to do that. And I don't think it's fair that we can take away future opportunities for farmers to. Develop sound farming economic plans. In, in an ag zone area. That's all.
So are we still evaluating whether you can add conditions? Good with that?
Well, I went to. Section two thousand and forty-two today. And it lays out what the planning commission needs to do. And it lays out that the county commission needs to find certain findings. And make written findings, certifying compliance with all sorts of things. I think what Mr. Healy was saying is, he doesn't know that if those things were done at the planning commission level. Which would allow you to then make those rules of finding. I see what Mr. Clunish is saying, which is that last provision, that you can put conditions on it. But this is talking about two different things.
Yeah, we, we did, what, and what I was referring to was that was modifying or get what you said though.
I think, I mean, I, I still think you're talking about two different things because. The county commission needs to make their own written findings, certifying compliance with comprehensive plan, et cetera. And then you've got to have your certification of compliance with all ordinances, ingress and egress, off right of way parking. Refuge and service areas, utilities, all of that. You have to be able to have in what the county commission is going to do. So I agree with Mr. Clunish, if you can put conditions on it, I just don't know if you're to that point. And I thought that's what we were saying, which was, you don't have the planning commission.
And you, and I, yeah. I see. I, I think it's kind of a little flawed anyway, that some of these things, I don't think we can. I just don't think we have the information that we would like. For one thing I want to talk about. Or it needs to be in here, but. People are talking about water. And records to. And what, yeah, at a more specific point. You know, those are, I, I just like those, we should have been.
We could just not allow them to come out. That's our control that we got for the P U D. You know, he, he planned out just that area. For the conditioning, he has a piece of property, property. I mean, we, we could just put in the condition that you can't come out. But with that, I mean, there's a lot of concerns that the neighbors have.
I think from an enforceable. Forcing the ordinance or whatever. We need to see this setback, the road. With drawn in this scale, I mean, the last one we did have is. Dimensions on there and defined and whatnot, and so that, those are things I think we should, we should have.
It does say the road width.
You have, you have road width, but it's. You know, part of it, I, I don't want to bring you into Gary, but I talked to you a little bit about it and just as far as. Because whatever approval that P U D, that's it. Yeah, it's, and. What's presented. Is kind of the, the model, but it doesn't have, okay, homes are going to be. Maybe no larger than this or, or, I'm just saying from an enforceability and from location of home. And what all happened, it's not, after I went back and reviewed some of that stuff, it's not getting over. What I see. So just more dimensions, lots, and I know you're not a specific lots, but it would be maybe a theoretical lot, there's a way to do it.
So that's what I stated in the last meeting. Everything on how we stated by the three managers. Also, as far as dimension. When I looked at every golden plans, you have specific dimension on this, which is P M A. If I remember right. I'd like to, I'd like to let these people, it's not their profession in town, to me, I guess, other than the spacious lots. As far as probably a person can build their home, I don't really have a restriction on that, I guess, if they want to build a nice sized home. I'd like to let that happen.
And that I can appreciate. Maybe not necessarily home size, but I do think, you know, to some of Sherry's point that she brought up. I don't have it in front of me, but anyway, we have to follow the intent of what that zoning ordinance that are, that R two was.
So you don't think the zone is R two, which you can't dominate, and R two is good?
No, the, the concern that's been brought up is the. Twelve homes on the seven acres.
Okay, so.
And I know you addressed, if you put it, you can mark the lake or whatever, you can make those work. And that was part of the reason that I, I felt. At the time that this was presented, would go over to this P U D. But I, I just, I do, I mean, after going through this and listening and what I think we. I think everybody, yourself included, is. Probably covered a little better, safer to have them lock down.
What, what do you exactly want for specifics as far as?
Setbacks from copper lines, setbacks from house to house within there.
So things like that, this, this is pretty, it's like a very curved property. I believe the housing stuff, I'm definitely needing setbacks from wow. The roads are thirty-five feet wide, maybe about ninety-five feet from side lots. Side lots is seventy-five feet. Or two.
That's why you need to hire an architect that has all these angles and all these, all these measurements calculated out for you guys, and it's in black and white so you can see it.
I just figured that I would be wanted to, you call setbacks and if I don't. And have the fine tonight, they're already fine, they become ordinance.
See, and that's something, once this becomes P U D, then they'll setback and go, they'll R two setback. So that's something we need to define, and that's where I'm saying, you know, I, I think. I think. Some of the concerns here is given that have been expressed, and I, and a lot of that, people fear the unknown unless it's.
So can we put a stipulation on it as being stated? I sort of swore I put setbacks on.
I remember seeing that you didn't hear.
I'm pretty sure twenty-five from south. And if, if there's not for some reason. Honestly, it's like. I just figured I had to find by those setbacks that were already stated. Or the R two.
So if we send it back to planning zone, like they did like with Napa and everything else, with the crane elevator. You just have to get all this thing worked on, and then you just put it forward, right? Because if you done that with Napa, you should have more, I don't know, yeah, for privacy. But you guys did that three times, two times, and send it back to planning zone. Make sure the road was done right, make sure the drawings are right, because I remember all the drawings, and then they brought it back for. Yeah, yeah, I don't have, um, development, but insurance done right. Is that correct what I'm hearing?
Right, yeah.
Because you guys have done that before on other projects, and I think the plan you guys don't do that is when you guys get control.
So there's another way to make the setbacks. Just like Dan said, with the stipulation, that you guys can have stipulations on it with the setbacks. I don't believe that the intent is of the, to get this approved. I believe we're going to come right back to this meeting, we're talking about not approving it. Based on a, a North Star not being on there when people know exactly where Mark is on here. It's a sound, I didn't just say no right word.
I think you'll still run into the same opposition, I think you saw them. I, my concern is to make sure eyes are down and people are crossed. I, my concern is to make sure eyes are down at people across.
So what, who wants, who wants that back? Do you want to?
Well, I don't think it would be a good place to start, 1303 I N B. The exact nature and extent of improvements to be developed or erected upon the tract, including contour site plans, building plans, and elevations, and lands for landscaping and aid areas, transportation patterns, and water and sewer services.
Didn't make anything.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, we've got a treat everybody there. I am sure you guys know that one, and now we're running this back here with any. We've got two people there.
Very few, it's all in, it's all there.
Yeah, they, yeah, they're surrounded by hangings.
Oh.
Yes, and when, and when you had the qualifications, you were, it was two and a half years ago. And that was surrounded by.
So at this point, we either need to make a motion to act on it, or we need to make a motion to send it back to the plan.
What, what are we not, because if we do look, if we do look at 1303 number two, it does talk about, in the event of a denial by a commission, you shall form an advocate of the reasons for the denial, which it sounds like we might be doing, including any recommendation, modification to the plan, which is cause the commission to reconsider.
Can I raise just one concern during the plan? The administrative law requires that septic tanks be 100 feet from high watermark, and 10 feet off of the next property line. If you look at the easternmost two septic lines, they don't fit. There's 100 feet for the drainage field from high watermark, and 50 feet from the, for the septic tank from the high watermark, and 10 feet for both from the property line. Where I got my drawings was off of Kiki, spending most of the night making sure I was within a foot or two of where I thought things were. So I wasn't just making stuff up. And I know that those eastern two, those septic tanks and drainage fields, did not meet the South Dakota law administrative rule, which is in your package somewhere, because I submitted that, so.
I'm aware of all of the setbacks, even from wells, water, border line, and they will all fit, and it all has to be pretty good, by the D E N R when they submit the plan. The D E N R says, hey, this is too close to the water, it ain't happening, and that's it.
Don't be aware of it, then put it in black and white on paper, and show it to the commission.
All the septic tanks are there, I will abide by that, just like all the R2 setback rules, and everything else.
Do you have setbacks?
So again, I go back to, we, it's nine o'clock, and we need to make a decision.
Make a motion for a continuance to the December 1st initial meeting, with orders from these, to gather whether the commission guys want to see the setbacks from surrounding properties.
Water.
What about water, specifically, water levels? Hey, how do you guys want me to do that? Because I thought the topic's going like, it's, I mean, I can, I can make up a plan, but if they don't agree to it, I'd like to have them agree to it before the next meeting, but if I make up a plan, then they just disagree with it, I'm just taking it.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that they necessarily have to agree with it, I think it needs to be identified at what point the well starts pumping, at what lock water level it starts, at what point it stops, and where, what's the reference point to, to that gap?
Okay, so if I don't wish, you're going to have to do a glacial waste survey.
Pardon? A glacial waste survey.
Why? Because they want to get that survey, to give you that gap.
I think you can submit a request to the D E N R.
Yeah.
And they will measure the high watermark, on the elevation, not up, certain, not where you dip your stick in the water. You have to give permission, and they will come out and do that for you.
That was in my letter, so with my permit, others that I got for, for well, one, a couple more things for information.
Got to get your glacial, glacial.
Well, actually, I don't, I don't need the permit, this is what's in the permit that I already applied for. So they did say that you need to add these specifics, we'll get you the high water level on the. So setbacks, when we not go on the, on the plan?
I think we should not allow any pumping at all.
If you don't allow me to pump at all, I'm not going to be proud of it. If I, if I build all these houses, and stuck on this lake, and this lake goes dry, I might get pretty sued. That's plain state, that lake dries out, and all these people build all these houses on there, and it has happened before. As far as, I don't know if it's going to happen again, I don't know, but I would rather have an insurance policy take, this goes empty. You could bring it back, or say, oh, I mean, guys, we're talking about
That's why I remember talking about this.
Nine foot lower than the current level. Do you know how much rain that is going to take to fill that up, nine foot deep, if they say for rain?
It did in 16 months.
It did in 16 months. So if it does go already, I won't have, I wouldn't even be filming if it did, and then I still won't be in trouble, because I'm not filming. Yeah, I don't know, I think that's been happening for 30, 40 years.
And I, I, I know that, I agree, that's why if, if this is to go forward, details just need to be locked down.
So I just don't, I want to come back here, okay? And I want to have something that everybody agrees on, so it doesn't get too tricky, and saying, okay, the plan we have, Matt, is not working, we need to come up with another. I just want to make sure that everybody gets. I think it would be better if we put the condition, if we put the condition on, say, you know, you cannot be a pump if the water, water level is less than six, less than what I can't see. And I've seen six, like, what are we, based that on? Put one down there.
Right.
The D E N R has.
They say, why aren't we, why aren't we going by what the D E N R, he has to get this specific.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, right there.
They get their application and approve, if not just, we has an application in, we got a lot of applications in, but not.
So right now, we have a partial motion, we have a continuance, and we still haven't put the reasonings for it. So we need to focus on finishing that.
So setbacks, what specifically do you think, you know, setbacks to neighboring property? Want to proceed?
Sure, the neighboring properties.
What would you guys like to see, more setbacks, 75 feet in the front, 25 feet on the sides, like regular R2? Well, I think hoping that a few years, you didn't. I just said, I don't want to make the setbacks, and I come back here to you guys, like, no. I feel like when, like, till Ron came in here, and he said he wanted 60 off your board line, well, that's a little close.
Yeah, I would just like, to me, I would just like to know the distance that we're looking at now.
25 feet on the side of 75. Just like regular.
What's the front, so what's the side?
The, okay, so the front would be 42 definition, and R2, I think, is front drive. So on the south side, that would be 435th, coming in, that first entrance there, okay? And then, so it'd be 75 feet from 435th on the south side, okay, which is that first building there, and that. And then, on the south side, from the shops on, 25 feet on the side, all the way down this whole fence line. And there's a 35 foot over there, so that's already done. And then, on the north side, on 6 to 7 inches there, it would be 25 feet from the front of, so the entry won't be from 305, the entry would be from 435th, so it'd be 75 from 435th, 25 from 305th.
I guess if, if the if you want to go forward, there's a, you know, game zone area, I'd like to see that professional design of this property, basically, so.
Yeah, I think, you didn't make.
But we want to follow the rules as opposed to rules that were broken last time, just to break things, say, rules, if you didn't put that.
Well, then I'd say you make the, you do it from here on out, just, I already done all of this one. And I have no problem with providing by the rules to accommodate.
The big difference is you're building in an A building.
I'm not building an R2.
You're building an R2, it's surrounded by A.
Correct, but it is R2.
It's R2 for what, 78.
So Commissioner Clement, you need to finish your motion.
I'm struggling with what this board wants. So I would just say, the setbacks, I guess I, what do you guys want to see?
I just think it goes over a lot better than, you know, some of the things, the water level. One of the concerns that you have, and I I'm sure, I'm sure, right, you plan it all through, but I mentioned earlier that if this whole thing was contingent upon the septic, I'll be through. I'm concerned if we move forward without that, that will come back, I guess.
See, and that's, to you guys, like, that septic, that's state law. If I get caught putting a septic right there, then I'm in trouble, not from you guys, from the state. The same thing with the water.
And I, no, I understand that.
By bringing the water levels up or down without D E N R permission, I'm in deep crap. Probably not even deep as the bottom, you're probably deep worse than that, okay? Same thing for game, I can't dig, whether the acre, whether inner or outside of that lake. I have all these state regulations.
I understand that, what my concern is when this, when this was passed forward, it was contingent upon that plan being submitted and approved. And I know that state laws are going to mandate that, dictate that, but that still doesn't, does not, isn't counting up the book, we're not following the motions out there. My thought is, if we have to do that anyway, some of these concerns need to be addressed, that's why.
So if I get the permit, when's the next meeting?
December 1st.
December 1st.
So it's, it's, get all pulled out, get the permit, and start bidding, before that, we get the knee out of what's true. But, like I said, I don't want to start bidding without everybody being on the same page, you know? But do you want the excavation permits from you guys? You know, it's like, I feel like Dan said, with this, with this being a P V, I wasn't, I didn't want to work in the P V. I want people to see the P V, I want a lot of 5 acres, but I was informed by numerous different people that a P V is the way to go. So I put a lot of 5 acres, and I'm down, I'm down there, I can put a house, don't get me wrong, but just like Montel Run, Montel Run just got denied for C U P, because he had storage units, and a bunch of other stuff on there because it didn't fit. So now I'm doing what I think I should do, and it's, it's going backwards.
I, I mean, I, I know what you're saying, I hear you. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to just kick the can to deny it later on, I just, I think this can get ugly, trying to protect everybody at all.
So we can't make the specifics, so we can't make the specifics tonight based on what you want for setbacks. Say, I motion to approve this, basing on all the setbacks, the R2 requirements for 20, 25 feet each side of 75 feet front, and no water levels are touched until an agreement is made between all the parties here at this moment, or whichever. And do any stipulations, like Dan was talking about earlier, that you guys can come up with.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't do the bottom of that agreement.
Yes, we motioned to pass this, but we cannot do any water pumping until there is water, a water level or a low point, and a high point. And I think that's the easiest way to do it, you just have a low point, hey, if it gets this low, okay, fine, start pumping water, but do not pump above this level.
Would that work for you, you know, an agreement with you? You know, that's a tough question, Dan. The reason I say that, you know, depending on what the water levels are, and type of meter we have had. Now, my feeling is, honest way to do that, Dan, would be safe, not to pump water in it, and if he needs water in there, he can go ahead and get a well from it, grow a well, could be getting into a dry situation. And then put his water in that lake. The only way is, we go up to nature, because we've had to kind of cooperate with nature for the last forever, and just pull that on. So I'm agreeing, so you're okay with us, if we put it up contingent on an agreement?
Yeah, okay. I agree with him, so honestly, as far as lake levels, I completely agree with him. I don't think it's a problem until it's a problem, until it dries out. And you said that happened like, once in the last half.
Nature's 76th, or the last ever did that.
So if that was the last time, there honestly shouldn't be a problem, so.
But here's what I heard, is that you don't do anything until it gets to that point, then you put in a well.
So, okay, so I can put in the well on that one.
I know, that's why I want details.
Not to pump the well.
That's why I want details, but that's what I heard, is you don't put a well in until it's dry. And what you're hearing is that you put the well in, but don't use it until it's dry.
I think, I think too.
You know what I mean? In which, so.
So the slough is going to, the slough is at like, 5 to 6 feet, or something like that, right? The rest of the lake is a 10-foot lake. So the main lake is not, is not going to drain out before that slough, that slough is going to be the first part that dries out. If that gets that low, I'll still have, I'll have 6 feet or so out in the center, something like that. So, if that does happen, I mean, I can dig out, you measure, a trap will be open there, without P V and permits whatsoever. So if I want to go over there, and I want to dig that out, and I can dig it, or, or where it is, is deep, that's a 14, odd, 6 foot all the way across, you know what I'm saying? So I still, I'll, I'll be at a safe 6-foot level for a John Doe, or whatever, in, you know, which being a low level right now, it would be 5 feet more than this right now, it's going to take a lot of water to get past that. You have to go 9 more feet of water. I think.
There's a 14-foot level that it was.
I think for all egg parties involved, if you're going to, you're going to require some kind of water monitoring system, Dan, that if he's going to pump in there, then he has to have the capabilities of draining it too, because, you know, if he, if he fills it, and we get a 5-inch rain, what's going to stop it from backing up to the, to the north, or to the west, to the upstream? Or what's going to stop it from going over onto Bob's bills, Kralcheck's Hines? So he's got to have, if you're going to allow him to put something to fill it up, you got to make sure there's something to let it go to.
I, I think, from what I've heard, he just wants to make sure the lake doesn't go dry. And, and if he, if he doesn't do anything, and we get a 7-inch rain like we've gotten, and the floods, there's nothing anybody can do.
But what if he does do it?
What's that?
What if he does do it, that's not the problem. The problem is, is you're going to allow him to do something, and then you got to have another plan in place to regulate the height. If he, if it rains 7, if he raises the lake 3 feet, and it rains 5 inches, it's going to flood. Would it, would it have flooded if he didn't raise the lake 3 feet? So you don't know that, and you can't prove that, but if you allow him to pump, then he's got to have a, a way to drain it, so it doesn't affect the surrounding agriculture community.
I agree with him, but I think there's a high, a high level stake that we need to put. So say I make my high-level stake out.
I don't think we should have a stake, you shouldn't have the ability to put a stake in it. I think whether nature should dictate.
I agree completely.
What I'm saying is, that's only a fair way to live, that's what we live with for all these years, I lived there 50 years, and that's what you've got to live with.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to let our state's assistant state attorney speak.
So, I just want to point out 1305, because I think what everybody's saying brings you to the fact that the construction shall follow precisely the plan approved by the county planning commission, to which modifications may be granted upon the filing of an amended plan. So here's the problem that I see, none of you are agreeing on the plan. So if I look at what you've submitted. So if I look at what you've submitted, do I know exactly what the plan is?
No, I would say you.
Oh, okay, so you say, you say I do. Okay, they say they don't. So it goes back to, I think, what Mr. Healy was saying. I don't know that it has to go back to the planning commission. I think you're all talking about good things. My question is, for the county to be able to enforce it, and you don't want to get starved, and then the county say, we didn't approve that, that's not in your plan. My question to everybody is, if you look at Mr. Evans' current plan, can we start construction and everybody will agree that he's permitted to do those things? So think long and hard about, is the plan, as it's been submitted, even if you put conditions on it, can he start construction and not run into trouble with, with the zoning administrator saying, that wasn't part of your plan?
That's my concern.
Gary, do you feel, um, this plan, I mean, what, what is your thoughts on it? We also gotta be careful that it's not too detailed, so if something moves, then, you know, it's not. I mean, what's your thought? You have more zoning experience than everybody here combined. I think, I think we're getting a little too hyper focused on these options, everybody brings up their points, but.
Well, that's, that's the issue is with the P U D, you know, there's more flexibility there. Um, he has specified on the current drives, some of the dimensions. But we mentioned that at the last meeting too, that, that we wanted to do more detail. So I think from what I'm hearing here is that everybody's in agreement that they feel like there needs more of a way to find layout down.
Uh, is it the commissioner's job to do this?
So I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion here, I'm gonna make a, like a re, uh, resending my first one. A motion for continuance for December first, we, in which time, um, Mr. Evans, I want you to get, uh, some more detail, maybe, okay? Um, give us measurements on this map, Gary, what else you want to see more? What, um, distances from the roads.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, um, lifts of roads, ways of walking, sorry. Okay, um, we'll put it on the map, um, it is on the map. Notice seeking, there's, okay. Notice seeking to, um, sizes of the houses, size of. Hold on here. Size, size of houses, uh, that'll all be, those will all be different as far as size of houses. Because whatever people want, they'll.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned with the size of the house as much as the.
You want to contour.
Be ready for lots or something.
So the, the mathematics that I stated at the last meeting, I'm not good enough coming up to the point six, and everybody not having. So we.
Well, like I'm hearing.
Contour of site plan.
Lots, lot, lot of. They're, they're sketched in or drawn, you know?
No, no, is it?
Actually, I don't know.
They don't actually meet.
I know, I, I know, but that's.
I gave the average lot size on the last meeting, showing that these were the half acres. These were point seven or something, and then these were point six. Over here on this, on this side, there was even four acres left for these on this side. This gentleman's here is point eight or point two left right wing. Um, I gave all those measurements at the last meeting.
So I want you to, I want you to follow section thirteen oh three, number eight, and I want you to get what you're studying to, uh.
Setback, I got setback, no, they're all.
Um, and then I want you to follow section thirteen oh three, number one.
Okay, but what is that specifically? I thought I was just, I'd like to know.
And Gary, would you find some time to sit down with her and go through this and make sure that it's your standard?
I just figured after three meetings that it already got the standard, I wouldn't know. Three meetings ago.
I think just be careful that anything that you went to your mathematics, and I was up, I was up in the commission meeting too. Put it on your plan. And so I get that like house sizes and that kind of stuff is gonna vary.
There is no plan for lot size, these are not going to be loaded out.
No, no, I, I'm not, that's what I just said, but like you said, the mathematical stuff that you've been talking about, the more you can put on the plan, not necessarily the, a specific lot size or anything like that. I'm just saying the more that's actually on the plan, the better.
And I was, I was told that from the very beginning, but when people just tell me more, the more stuff, the more stuff, the more stuff, I come up with as much in my mind as possible to put on these things as far as detail, but I need specifics. I, I can't put on lot sizes if they're not loaded out. What's, what's gonna, what's the difference? I mean, if I have the mathematics there and they're not gonna be loaded out, I don't know. So if you want me to, uh, put in the mathematics in the next packet, I'll do that. I cannot.
The less you get, the better.
The less that's open to interpretation. For instance, what's gonna happen is, or maybe won't happen. Well, here's a gross example of what could happen, and I definitely, I don't think you're gonna do it. I, I, I know, but you got twelve homes here, right?
On this.
On that north, okay.
Correct.
And they're fairly evenly spaced.
Correct.
And if somebody pays for a bigger area here, let's say, and they put one big house here, you put eleven tiny ones crammed in the corner.
Okay.
Not saying you're gonna do it, but if that were to happen.
So did you guys require for Randy Golden, uh, or Kurt Alderman to do this when they had theirs? Cause he doesn't.
He had one.
His was a C U P to a.
Yeah, for the C U P. Um, Randy's had a plan, he had, he had dimensions on there of all his halves and things like that. Uh, but I think he had like this road dimension from the, from like the highway down where it's looped with these things like that.
But the, the houses around the lake, they don't remember that, yeah, I'm pretty sure. What just sucks, what I'm kind of a guinea pig here, that I'm getting nitpicked away, and these last guys in the last year didn't get nitpicked. Um, honestly, I, I would think you guys would start after me if you're gonna start doing this, but, I mean, it's a little upsetting to me. I'm sorry, I've done a lot of work. Um, a lot of people have made false statements here, not with you guys, with the, with the crown, uh, such as the wetland that we talked about there. Um, and I have to do all this homework for ignorant statements made, um, that are false. And I have to come in here and defend and provide evidence on something. Uh, unlike a court case, you can't do that in a court case, you have to provide evidence, probably. But, I mean, if, it is what it is, if there has to be a continuance, I would just like specifics. So I can come in here and say, hey, I did exactly what you guys said. I mean, I listened to Gary for last meetings, you know, no offense against Gary, I know he said put more stuff in there as much as you can, but I just really need to know from you guys, what exactly what I need, not Gary, from you guys. Cause I thought with my, nothing being mentioned in these last three meetings, that my plan was good. If I were to know my plan wasn't good, I would have submitted a new plan in the last meeting. So if you guys could just give me exact specifics, not a vague thirteen oh one or whatever, I would really.
Commissioner Clement, you're gonna finish your motion?
Not again.
Well, you need to restate it so Patty gets it right. There was too many people talking at one time, I don't know what you want.
I have a question. Is it, is it a continuance and really have not, uh, on December tenth, is that gonna cause any problems with the result? Underlying mission and that's the second thing, I should be, um.
I'm wondering if there are two locations that they need to be publication. That would why I. And I know what interpretation I did, but if I have to go through all that again, then that. It was noticed with specific dates, I noticed with specific twenty day hurdle ball, so.
What's that?
It was noticed with specific dates and specific first reasons. I don't even know what I can name this for the hurdles.
All right, I'm gonna withdraw my motion. Make a motion to approve these on following conditions. Uh, need to have a twenty-five foot setback from neighboring properties. Rip ramp on three oh fifth street. Guaranteed lake access to the current landowners. Septic systems need to meet D E N R requirements. And there needs to be, before a lot of them be pumped, there needs to be an agreement with the downstream handowners. Downstream. And upstream landowners. And I'm basing this on, uh, comprehensive plan page one twenty-five, promoting economic diversification, presenting a positive initiative attitude toward economic development.
Which number was that on page one twenty-five?
Uh, it's in there. I, I don't know, there's, it's not numbered here.
Thank you. Mr. Clement. Just for clarification, the, the, uh, up and downstream neighbors, we should probably watch that.
Well, yes, if you got something like that.
Well, how far up do you go?
Uh, quarter mile.
I, I think we go farther.
How far do you always go?
Fractor, I'm a mile.
You're guessing one mile.
Well, drainage is what, a mile down and a half mile up?
We've got twenty to drop in a mile over there, so that could be weird, so like. So a mile.
Two miles to me. Yeah, and I know it does affect.
Yes.
And next time, you says two and a half. To get to, to get to Lucian's, what you need to say, or maybe a lot really should be, uh.
I'm, I'm headed to one mile for the downstream end.
Do you want to talk into your microphone or this on tape? So Dan, are you're saying just one mile for the downstream, nothing upstream?
Uh, what you want to do?
I would have the upstream.
Go for it.
Drain floor is a, then a half mile, a mile, and then downstream is to the blue line, or a plus.
Upstream one half, downstream one mile.
That doesn't lead you to the blue line, right?
So at, at this point, Dan's motion, if I got it right, is to approve.
Right, uh, that can be. Last mile, a mile, half mile down.
So I would be talking two miles, this is, yeah, this is two miles, because I make that, is it a mile?
Uh, isn't that what it's.
So I'm gonna repeat what you said, if I get it right. Uh, approve based on twenty-five foot setbacks, rip ramp on three. I'm getting the general gist, I might not getting all the words. So the twenty-five foot setbacks, rip ramps on three oh five, guaranteed lake access to the current residents. Septic, uh, D E N R requirements.
Septic system must meet D E N R requirements.
Okay, so this is my shorthand, thank you. Uh, before water can be pumped, you need an agreement with upstream landowners a half mile and downstream landowners one mile. And then your last was based on page one twenty-five, would you please repeat what that was?
Um, promoting, uh, the plan considerations from the top planers, promoting economic diversification, and presenting a positive initiative attitude toward economic development.
Two, two miles down, right? Yeah, I'd really, blue stream. A mile, three quarters, two, but the blue stream is probably where it should be going to. Drain floor, like, if you went to the drain floor, you go to the blue line.
Two miles to the downstream, which is right where.
Okay, four, seven.
I said a mile and a half, and I use it, I use it at two mile.
Why would modify, uh, all lake facilities? From Lake Alexis to the, to the downstream blue.
So to protect myself here, um, so say they say no pumping period, um, I can't agree with that. I, I had, I really wanna have good faith, they won't have, if something figured out, I want something figured out. I don't know, um.
There has to be some, the reason I really lay went with a mile, cause that's probably the most effective. I know to Mr. Jackson, two miles is a, a long way, and I know they get. I feel like draining not the way that.
On the drainage board, it goes to.
Yeah, then another, I think Matt had a dozen holes, what he said. If, if one of those twenty-six people say no one is no pumping, then I can't live with that.
I can't pump, you know, the most thing is.
I, how, you're gonna have Bob, Bill, right?
Hines.
And Hines?
And Rob, Rob, Rob.
Well, yeah.
Rob, uh, Pat, uh, David, uh, Bill, Larry Selner.
What's her name, uh, that lady, uh.
I think it's gonna be quite beautiful.
Tyler, Tyler National Action Department.
Let's go to.
Cut the ground. Yeah, forget how, uh, dealers, how you look around after. Yeah, ridiculous.
So it's half mile upstream, mile downstream.
Well, the drainage board is blue line.
Are you, is your motion complete now?
I know. I think, I believe so.
Before, before you go into your motion, if you're gonna restate it again, I'd like to have Matt in, in his plan address some of the eight items, or all of the items that Fury, uh, read, uh, when she interviewed this item. So you're talking about some of the same things you mentioned, Dan, economic development, et cetera. But I, I, I think he needs to address how it's gonna be advanced or not hinder the, your, your area, uh, et cetera.
So one of the things, uh, that I did in this plan, uh, was to completely separate the housing, uh, from the current housing that's there. Um, let's say it's a seven acres on the more side, strictly put, uh, houses on that side to reform what was already there. I also took, uh, in the plan, as you can see, I put houses along that entire shoreline.
Two, that, that, that's not probably what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
What I'm talking about is, uh, several people have talked to me about what, uh, hundred and eight damn sites would do to their, their, uh, their cultural, uh, living space.
So right now, um.
I think that's what I'd like to have, it's.
How's it? I think you're saying, so right now, I currently have seventy spots directly next to a cornfield, like literally right on my property line. Um, that there's been concerns, uh, with like Bob chops, uh, him saying, you know, what about soybeans? And sprayed or stuff like that. Um, I already deal with all that stuff, I feel, I know that, uh, I was kind of misunderstood when we talked about, uh, uh, you saying that that was, uh, was an egg there, and I don't, that's all eggs, sorry, I admit that it was being used as egg at the time. Um, but, so I have these cornfields next to me, I deal with all that right away. Um, I have no issues with any of that stuff, um, as far as the residential side.
Today, today you have no issue with it?
Hmm, uh, for the last five years that I have my, had my other parts, um, I've gotten along with the farmers around me, um, been very accommodating to them.
What I'm looking for is sort of guaranteeing the future departments around you.
So that was one thing I have no problem, uh, putting it into writing. Um, I did my last spot, uh, I did put in a purchase agreement, I was wanting to purchase his land. Um, he did have some stipulations, uh, as far as what he wanted done, uh, he wanted complaints and stuff like that. So I drew up a purchase agreement, I believe he still has a copy of it. Um, and the, the purchase did never go through, but I have no problem, uh, putting anything in writing, saying, hey, uh, this is egg around you, and there can be no complaints. And even on my side, I can't have any spray drifts, uh, going to his side, whether I'm spraying weeds or whatever else. I have no problem with any of that being right, as you say. And then as far as the residential side, um, as far as the traffic goes, there will be no traffic on that side, um, other than twelve houses, which would be, if I did R two zoning, there'd be seven, so I'm asking for five more houses there, which. So I'm asking for five more houses there, which, like I stated, there are houses already there that are on .8 acres and I'm asking for point, it's like .67, but I'm like a 10th acre, a little bit more or less than what they are. And there's a .2 lot there also, .2 acres. But the roads are completely separate, they do not go out of their driveway onto 305, they go onto 435. There is that border in houses also to create the outdoor feeling, so they don't, they don't want to see that commercial side. They don't have to see it. And I'm a big, big tree transpire. I transpire huge 25 and 30-foot tall trees at my other parks, at every single site over there. Cost me, you know, over 100 grand to do all of those trees that I did. I spent a lot of money on trees and a lot of money on landscaping. It's, I tried talking to them to figure out exactly what we could do, if they have any more recommendations that they do want writing. Like you said, I have no problem with that.
I'm done with my motion.
I'm not done with it.
Well, I have a motion on the floor, if there's not a second, then it goes away. But I guess if there's not a second.
I'll say.
I have a motion on the floor to approve this. And I'm just going to truncate all these things, it's not going to be revayed on 25-foot setbacks between, from the property lines, riprap on 305, guaranteed lake access to the current residents. Septic has to follow DNR requirements. Before you can pump water, there needs to be an agreement with upstream a half mile and downstream one mile. And that's based on page 125, number one and nine, under the county planning challenges. Did I include everything down?
Yeah, that sounds good, sure, thank you very much.
So we have a motion and a second, further discussion.
Do you have any more discussion down?
Well, I'd truly like to address how it's gonna enhance culture in the area. Where you just need to be for, for example, the original property owner, had the right to pull one pole down that lake. How that's gonna be for.
That was one thing I've got to note on this, is the force involved traffic.
Correct, so as of right now, there is allowed one ski boat. And then there's non-wake producing boats. As long as they're non-wake producing, there's really no limit, right? So I'm not looking for ski boats, I'm looking for John boats. I don't. Oh yeah, I agree completely. If you're, if you have unlimited access, just like you said, then you can have that as long as it's within the agreements of the inhabitants and stuff like that. You want to go ski for three hours or whatever, and I say, I'd like to ski today, or you want from 11:01, we can apply by that. I have no problem with doing that. I'm, I'm looking for fish boats as far as that goes. As far as boat restrictions, I don't want crowded out there. It's 56 acres total, the lake is like 40, maybe something like that. So I don't know what's good out there.
Can a fishing boat's toll?
I think he only said mile downstream, not to the blue line. I just wanted to play.
It is.
That's what Dan wants.
And, and Matt also make sure the drainage stays open for Mr. Chau.
Yes, and that was another thing I, I talked about, about, he does have drainage coming in from the south side into my lake.
He's quite ready to couple areas.
Yeah. So I did move that point development over in my, that over, so that doesn't affect any of his stuff. And if there is any other water drainage along that side, it will be a culvert or anything allowed up there. I don't think that it'll be used as part of the slope that we already have right now. But if it does, then it'll be a culvert and a loud fight, drainage to go through that way. As far as the enhancement.
This is really discussions.
I'm sorry.
Are you ready for a vote? We'll do a real call though. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Fury?
Yes, yes.
Fury?
No.
Motion passes three, two.
Thank you.
Are you ready to get in there, everybody?
With the motion for fighting the board.
I'm excited, and.
I know, like a motion for fighting.
We just want, we got one topic and then we're going to executive session. So why don't we just go through on this? And then when we go up to it. So item number 14, we are at 25. And I'm not going to talk very long on this, we'll do more discussion on this tomorrow.
We'll take care of that, Gary.
Yes, was there any specific questions?
No, I saw it, I thought it was really good, the department, sort of an agreement.
So I have some, several changes that I would like to break on some of the positions. I, I don't think we testified where two of them were at. And I do have kind of an idea of how much it's gonna cost us to implement it, and we'll talk about that tomorrow, so. Any.
Are we recording or hold on that tomorrow?
No, 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 we're just working, it's a work document, and then we'll probably put it out December 1st if we're ready. And otherwise, it's December 15th. So.
I have not, I'm going to check with the department revenue. I mean, if you decide to go with that, instead of changing the budget, making amendments, I'm gonna talk this one. It'd be better just to go with the budget and then we can do something.
Yeah, I would have changed all my lovely poll. Yeah, you know, and the, the department right now that's seeing the biggest is the sheriff's jail. The city just gave a big increase, and so I know he's trying to be competitive. And that's the one that's gonna probably need the most supplementing. Good point on that, so public comment at this time, come on forward.
Oh, I've got a public comment, Sherry.
We've got, we've got a speaker already, hang on a second, Gary.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to say a couple things, you know, first of all, I'm pretty sorry to price Peter, got the rest of the room, that loud. You said that Mr. Evans is passionate, nobody else was, Gary. I don't think you find a more passionate person than a farmer. I mean, there's years where they do it for absolutely no money at all. So don't tell me that we're not passionate about what we do and anything. Second of all, Mr. Flemish, I think we're supposed to.
He's not attacking. He's probably.
Second of all, Mr. Flemish, I'd like you to reevaluate your thoughts on economic development. Fact that this went through, there will be three houses right next to it. My house, the north of it included, and some other houses on a plate that would be value. Our tax base will go down because our houses are the best. And those three houses, you think the argument that are in that subdivision will be unsolvable. So you're lost there by 180 campsites, it's not gonna offset that tax base. And then I'm gonna spend as much money as you think they are, and that lake is still tough, you're not a campground for no one. Lastly, I would like to urge the commission to rethink this whole campground thing in an R1 and an R2. You know, if it's good enough for an R1 or an R2, then help put it in R3. Watch everybody suffer. Second of all, you need to make this more black and white. There's too much gray area there. And what's good for one person should be good for everybody. So Mr. Evans can buy this, buy this ground and do a BUD, then anybody else that has pasture light should be able to put a BUD in and put camp ground. You guys really need to sit and think long and hard about all this. And I'll even say it on record, and some of this has no offense to any of you guys, so I'm not having any weather. But Gankton County is laughing stock of towns in South Dakota. For what we do here and for agriculture. And I also want to send, I also want to state, and I sent you guys all emails, and Sherry was the only one that responded back. I had to track some of the other ones down. I'm very disappointed how it made it through the zoning board process, all, all these details that we just wasted eight hours on for all these meetings. You guys need to get the strike. I mean, how, these guys put in hot cards, you make them triple kit and all this stuff. And somebody says, I'm gonna put a campground up, and they draw it on a computer, and it's just like, okay, go ahead. Just because the zoning says it? Well, the zoning says they can put hot cards up too. But they gotta have all these stipulations, they gotta have a plan, they gotta have everything, and you guys just push your campgrounds. So if you want economic development, it comes from businesses. It doesn't come from campgrounds. And think about it this way. If you're renting a house, I mean, I've done it several years, I did it in college, think about your mentality. Is that your house, you take fragment or is this something we do where you live? Campground, same way. Or you own that piece of property, you take fragment and you keep it up. So I urge you guys all to repeal or amend the ordinances and take campgrounds out and put in a better process. Get this stuff pushed through.
Thank you.
Great. First and foremost, I want to commend Chair or train to display order. It's a hard concept, it seems anymore to have order in a meeting. But I want to think about an aspect that it was a fairly gray scenario here, because I'm gonna go back and touch on the fact on how much time and effort was put into several individuals to enhance their operation and enhance income in the county. They followed that, and then they got sued over it for following the orders, and we still don't, you know, we read in a paper where there's been settlement. So this whole aspect that you can do something right and get sued over it for doing it right, and then something great comes up, and you spend two and a half hours on adding stipulations to verbally instead of having it hard-tacked by engineers and architects and everything else. And I'm gonna touch on the septic side. For Pete's sake anyhow, if I wanted to build a hog barn, I've got to be a half a mile from the residence. You put it in a septic tank, what is a septic tank? It's a steel tank that overflows and breaches. Mr. Chop there, is, is that gonna infringe on him all this drainage to Mr. Chop or whoever? As a, as a landowner and a farmer, I've got chastised for my manure enhancement program for my crops. But the septic idea, you guys have no problem with that for some reason. I, I wonder where add is needed to help.
Thanks, Ray. Gary, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I would, thank you, Sherry. I just want to remind everybody, everybody knew it was Veterans Day last week on November 11th. And I attended Hy-Vee Free Breakfast. There were several, several veterans there. They also had a drive-up, pick-up for the free breakfast, and also Pizza Ranch had free meals for veterans. And I just want to thank both those places in town. I don't believe anybody else gave away anything too much free, a few discounts here and there. But Hy-Vee and Pizza Ranch really stepped up to the plate. And, and I think next year, some of these other places need to step up to the plate because only 1% of the population serves in the military currently, and only 7% of the entire population has ever served in the military. That means that 93% of you people that never served in the military are getting a free ride for, for the, the 7% and the 1%. So you better think about it. Freedom isn't free. 58,479 died in Vietnam and almost that many in Korea. And you know, you people take, have a lot of things for granted. I lost two cousins in Vietnam, and my other cousin was killed shortly afterwards. I'm the only one that survived and got to have a, a life. So think about what I'm telling you. You know, you're bickering over a lot of this stuff here today, and a lot of people have died for your right to bicker over. They've died for your hog barns, they've died for your campgrounds. And you know what? I see a whole bunch of greed. It is just greed with greed with more greed with the, you don't stop and remember and think about the people that died for you. So have a great night, thank you.
Public comment is closed. Any commissioner updates? Forgive me, I didn't make a list, I'll touch on it tomorrow.
I don't have any.
Anybody else have anything they want? All right, given that, we are now at the last item. We need a motion to go into executive session for litigation personnel issue for relief. But I have a motion to go into executive.
Second.
I have a motion by Don, a second by Joe, to go into executive session for litigation personnel issue and court release. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we are now in executive session. So very familiar. All right, we need everybody to have a microphone on.
The motion would come out of executive session.
A motion and a second to come out of executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we are now back in regular session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion on, for case one, the may be pending unable to determine medical indigence at this time for South Dakota by law 28-13-1.3.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second for case one pending. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to also make a motion to deny case two based on South Dakota by law 28-13-3, 28-13-4.
I'll second that motion.
Case two? Case two, yes. I have a motion and a second to deny case two, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to pay $1,250 in burial expenses for case number one.
Very good.
I have a motion and a second to pay $1,250 toward case one burial, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, four to zero.
Madam Chair, in case number two, I make a motion to authorize $1,250 for burial expenses.
I have a motion and a second to approve case number two for $1,250 in burial costs, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Items for next meeting, I have the cottonwood liquor, we need to republish that one this. Items for next meeting, I have the cottonwood liquor. We need to republish that one as well.
I'm gonna check. I don't think we have to publish as long as it's been minutes, if it's, if it's a renewal. We don't have to, and I emailed Rob, and he thinks you might have to, but I will. And I'll check, because I know we have to if there are new ones, but let me check for sure, like here and.
Anything else right now that I think needs to be on the next agenda for December one? At this point? And a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Yep, we can hear you. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.